So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
So Mayor, we have Tracy, I don't know if we've met before, but I've met Roger, I've met Julia, by Zoom, which is the only way you meet people this past year. And Mr. Spalzino and I, as well as Tony Acavelli and the members of the Sewer Department, and our team has been working very closely with Save the Sound and working on items that are being worked on now from the consent order and the settlement that we have or the agreement that we have with Save the Sound moving forward to refurbish and rehabilitate our sewer lines, as well as continue to collect information regarding some of the issues that we've had in the past that we're currently correcting. And what I wanted to do was bring them on many meetings ago, I think with Bob, Julia, I don't know if Roger was there, but we talked about having Save the Sound come to a meeting to address the board and maybe give their impression of how things are going so far, how we've been working together cooperatively to try to get things done. And also, if there's anything that they need of us, not just me at the manager level or Mr. Spalzino as our village attorney, but from the Board of Trustees. So that's why I wanted to invite them and potentially have an open discussion, if that's something that Julia and Roger and Save the Sound, you know, want to do.
I just want to caution that, and I'm sure Julia will agree with me, we are in a lawsuit. We are negotiating a proposed consent order to replace the one that was in place. So we're not here to talk about the lawsuit. We're here to talk about how the village is and can continue to address the environmental issues in the sound. Is that fair, Julia?
Yes, I think that's fair.
Okay. And Julia, you're the attorney for Save the Sound?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, thank you. And now, members of the Save the... Tracy and Roger, is there issues or actions that we should be taking that, in your view?
Before, before, I'm sorry, Mayor. Before you answer Roger, Tracy, let's see you guys. Bob, does that mean I can say?
Victor, we are specifically not talking about the lawsuit tonight.
Right.
So, I mean, of course, it's up to you whether you refuse or not, but I don't see any reason for this discussion, why you need not participate.
If you keep us, if you keep the line, then I stay.
I will try.
Let's get to it. Tracy, Roger?
So, yeah, for those who don't know me, I'm Roger Reynolds. I'm Senior Legal Counsel. And Tracy directs our large water program, our Save the Sound, Long Island Sound Program. And Julia is our outside attorney with Super Law Group. So we've had what I would characterize as very good discussions with the city, with Jerry, with Bob, with others, for several months now. I think we're fairly... So I think we're discussing what the town is doing there, and I can just say that we've been happy with those discussions. I'm not 100% what other, you know, feedback you're looking for from us and how to discuss this without getting into litigation-type issues, but we're certainly happy to answer any questions and, you know, provide any information that you all might want about the sound in particular, and that's really Tracy's expertise. You know, she monitors water quality and sort of keeps up with what's actually going down there in BOM.
Wait, I just want to say before we get into that, that I think this whole board and the village administration really wants to work to make sure that our environment and our beaches and our waters are as clean as they possibly can be. And, you know, when we put the issues that are currently between us, behind us, I would hope to work, you know, closely with Save the Sound in a cooperative way to develop strategies and public outreach to make that happen.
So with that... That's absolutely our intent as well. We want to be collaborators and partners with the towns, and that's really what Tracy does.
Yeah, so, so thank you, Roger, and thanks, everyone, for having us here. I think, you know, one thing I can share, and I believe you've heard not that long ago from Peter Linderoe on our water quality monitoring, you know, we are still seeing some water quality issues in the Mamaroneck River. And last week, we issued our, and I'm just looking at a monitor up here with the data, we issued our Long Island Sound Beach Report on Thursday, and I sent an advanced copy to the mayor and to Jerry. Still having water quality problems vis-à-vis fecal bacteria at Harbor Island Beach. And last season, so in 2000, last time we issued a beach report card, it looked like there were some improvements happening around 2015, 16, 17. But then in 2018, it dropped back to a C-, and then in 2019 and '20, it's down to a D. You got a D+ last season. So there definitely is still a connection between rain events and pollution at the Harbor Island Beach. So, you know, that's something I would encourage you all to look at and think if there's other management practices you can put into place. Westchester County is also aware, it's their data. The beach report is entirely made out of Department of Health monitoring data that we just collect from the EPA database when it's posted and then share with the public. And you can see all the raw beach monitoring data on our website, soundhealthexplorer.org. If you go to that, you can see the days when it was high. And that some of the exceedances were, you know, significant, especially, I'm just looking at the data here, you had some spikes in contamination in September and some in June and July of last summer. So I don't know if there's been any management changes vis-à-vis the boom or beach cleaning or any of those management practices have changed in the past three summers. You had some really high spikes in the 2019 season, including some where there was very little rain and then some where there was more significant rain.
So Tracy, based on the information that you have and you've studied, which I have not had the ability to do because I haven't gotten it yet, do you have any thoughts is, from what I'm hearing, is some of it you think may be rain, but others things you think may not be? And then the question is, is it the beach or is it the entire harbor?
Yeah, so the Department of Health data that we use for the beach report is just at, you know, they're just monitoring the water quality right at the beach. Save the Sound does more comprehensive monitoring in the harbor. So, so we have, you know, we can combine those two data sets and look at harbor data as well as beach data. But, you know, definitely when it's raining, the rainwater is bringing pollution with fecal bacteria in it into the harbor. So I think, you know, looking at what's happening in Mamaroneck River, it looks like some of that is coming from the larger watershed through the river. And then, you know, does it increase...
Freedom.
Sorry, when it gets right to the beach, based on our data, it doesn't look like it's very different. It looks like it's pretty consistent from the river right down to the harbor, flowing right to that public beach.
But I understand that there are tests that are done in the harbor, not only at the beach, but at the different, at the other beaches, you know, Shore Acres, Beach Point, et cetera. What I'm trying to get a feel for is whether it is coming down the rivers is the problem. It's coming from the Harbor Island itself, whether it is coming from, you know, the sound coming in. We were told that the thunder boom was not performing anything one way or the other, and it's been removed. And so that raises an issue based upon what you've suggested and just in raw data, that if you go back when the thunder boom was more functional, there was, you had a better rating, if you will.
Yeah, yeah. I would definitely encourage you to put the boom back. I didn't know it had been removed, but it definitely was our finding from monitoring this data for, you know, six, six or seven years now, that the boom really was making a difference and that we were seeing better grades at the beach than outside the beach. Certainly at the mouth of the harbor, where you have more of an influence of the open sound water, like at, you know, Beach Point Club and Orienta, and then on the other side, Mamaroneck Beach and Yacht Club, those are all better. You definitely are getting, your impacts are definitely coming from inland. So you have pollution in Mamaroneck River. You have much more pollution at Harbor Island Beach now without the boom than you do at those other locations. Shore Acres is still, you know, middling. Shore Acres got a C+?
Hold on. Let me be clear, we didn't remove the boom until last week. So that didn't affect any numbers. And from the information that we have from, I believe, was just the County Department of Health, the numbers inside the boom and outside the boom in recent years were comparable. The boom had been greatly deteriorating over the past, it's a 20-year-old boom, and the shelf life was 10 years.
So maybe what you need is a new boom. So the fecal bacteria attaches to sediment. So being attached to sediment is the way it's going to travel out of Mamaroneck River and then get up to the shore. So as much as the boom filters out, you know, those particulates, you're going to have better water quality on the inside of a well-functioning boom.
Tracy, did you, does your data show that the Mamaroneck River is worse than Beaver Swamp Brook or vice versa, or that both have issues? Or those are the two main contributors to the harbor proper? And Beaver Swamp Brook comes in both, you know, Guyan Creek, but also in Otter Creek.
Yeah, so...
Those two flows are the same. They come from, they came from the same river. They split by the Rynek High School.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at our data again, right here, which is on our website for anyone who wants to check it out. So the Beaver Swamp Brook performs worse than the Mamaroneck River in terms of the geomine, the average fecal level is higher in Beaver Swamp Brook. But I imagine, you know, hydrologically, you're getting more of an impact from the Mamaroneck River. They're both, they both have high fecal bacteria. So if you look at our page from last year where we compared the rivers, the most contaminated was the Hutchinson River, and then Beaver Swamp Brook, and then Mamaroneck River, and then down the line Blind Brook, Shell Drake River, and Byram.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, Shell Drake is not as big a problem as Mamaroneck River going up towards White Plains and Scarsdale?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I know when I was doing sampling and doing the testing, Brook was far worse than any of those. And I don't know, I don't know enough about the interchange, but the concentration was much more severe.
That's also what we document. Yep.
Okay. I just, I do just want to point out, just going back to the boom, that with or without the boom, after a half inch of rain, the beach is closed for 24 hours. After an inch of rain, the beach is closed for 48 hours. Regardless, that was Westchester County Department of Health. So I just, I just want to, you know, have that, bear that in mind.
Yeah, so if you look at the, if you go to the Sound Health Explorer site, you can actually see what your thresholds are in terms of rain and when you tip into failures at this site, because we put the local precipitation with the numbers. So sometimes it's, sometimes the biggest rains don't actually make the water quality worse because the, you know, the first flush, as we call it, is just that plug of pollution that's in a river or in your storm water system that comes out, and that's when it's highly polluted. And then at a certain point after that, it's just rain, and the rain's just diluting it and pushing it out to the sound. So often, the really big events aren't actually that polluting. But, you know, every rain event's a little bit different. So, you know, I agree that the Westchester County is erring on the side of caution. But just for this board to know, sometimes a little event, a little rain event, can give you more pollution because it just gets to the beach and then it doesn't get pushed out further.
In all of your statistics, have you tested the Mamaroneck River in Beaver Swamp Brook further upstream from the village, i.e. in Harris, playing Scarsdale?
Yep, yep. We monitor up to both of those communities. Let me just look at my map here.
So what I'm trying to find out is, is it the same? Is it higher? Is it lower, you know, significantly?
So looking at last year, I mean, in prior years, it did get higher upriver on the Mamaroneck River in 2019, 2018, 2017. Yep, there were higher counts as you got away from the harbor last year. That improved somewhat upriver. So there isn't, you know, it looks like there's been some improvements there on the Mamaroneck River. And we know that they are also, you know, doing repairs to their sewer system. So, you know, the hopes with the legal action that we've taken is that, you know, all the upriver impacts for your community are going to decline as those communities fix their sewers, and then your local impacts will decline as well. On Beaver Swamp Brook, we don't go outside of the village. Oh, no, that's not true, we do. So on Beaver Swamp Brook, we go into Harrison. There, it's not, it's not worse than Harrison. Actually, there's hotspots, the hotspots from last season were at the Village of Mamaroneck.
Okay, Tracy, as you know, we're, I think we're spending $5 million this year on the first phase to try and remediate our pipes. Since this discussion was supposed to revolve around capital, are there any other capital projects that you would recommend that would be helpful to us? And if you don't have an answer tonight, you can send us an answer.
Okay, yeah, I don't have anything prepared, but I would definitely encourage you to get a new boom for the beach and put that back in and keep on that 10-year schedule. But I don't have anything prepared at this point to suggest for Blind Brook.
Jerry, did you have anything you wanted to cover?
No, Tracy, we did ask Peter for some additional testing in and around the area where trustee Natchez was talking about, closer to Harrison. And if at some point, and I know the schedule is already prepared this year, but if at some point you could add some testing around that area that our Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee is concerned about because of past events, that would be helpful to us. But we can talk about that, you know, separately, not in a board meeting.
Okay, and I would say, you know, one thing to share with you that we're pretty excited about is we've added a new Director of Ecological Restoration for our New York office. So we're now better staffed and positioned to do on-the-ground storm water management projects. So if there's something like, you know, some green infrastructure or plantings or restoration of marshes, that'll help filter some of this pollution and make sure the water's a little better by the time it gets into the harbor where people come in contact with it. That's something we're, you know, we're happy to talk about and work on some plans and, you know, support going for grants, state or federal funds to get some of that work happening.
Great.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Roger, and thank you, Julia, for coming tonight. I'm sure we'll be having more interactions in the future, and hopefully we can work, you know, cooperatively to make our beach and our community more ecologically friendly.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and thanks so much for the invitation.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a large agenda before us. So let's just get into it and work our way through. There are six items that need to be addressed for tonight's regular meeting. I will get us to those at around 6:30, and then we'll work on those, then we'll take a break, and then we'll come back for a regular meeting. All right, the first up is the Traffic Safety Walking Assessments Studies. These were, these were done before COVID by, you know, meeting facilitated by Shannon Purdy. We met with different neighborhoods. We got a lot of people active, and a lot of people went out for walks and surveyed what they believed were trouble in their community, trouble areas, to try and first identify them. And then there are a couple of them that we worked with Village Traffic Consultant, Matt Komodi, to come up with practical solutions. Jerry, you want to get, jump in here?
Sure, Mayor. Over the past, I guess, several years since I've been here, the Traffic Commission, along with other volunteers that are not necessarily on the board, started doing walking assessments, which was the first time for me as a municipal manager of over 11 years to have a group so interested to put boots on the ground and actually walk and evaluate the traffic, the pedestrian, the issues associated with some of these known areas that are a little bit, that are a significant concern to the residents. And thanks, of course, to Shannon, who works for the National Traffic Safety Board and her day job, but volunteered here in the village for us before she moved away. So there's a couple of projects here that, actually, this is almost like a two-part type of discussion. The first part is the Prospect Avenue and Fenimore Road intersection, which is designed. And it, we've already paid our traffic consultant to take a look at it and to provide a cost estimate for what it would be to improve that area. Everyone on the board knows, you get a lot of emails, at least the ones that I'm copied on, regarding the concern from the area residents as well as others about this intersection. So regarding the two-part, it's basically an approval from the board to move forward on a capital project, which is Prospect Avenue and Fenimore Road, which is very close to final plans and bid specifications. And then there's three other, there's Old Post Road Walking Assessment, there's Orienta Walking Assessment, as well as the Old White Plains Road and Grand Street Walking Assessment, which we did. What we have is the walking assessments from the committee, from the commission, but we don't have, we need the approval of the board to move this forward to our traffic consultant and to provide some funding so that the traffic consultant can develop recommendations and safety improvements for those three areas as well. So that's why I'm saying it's a two-part discussion and approval.
Questions or concerns?
Jerry, I want to thank you for breaking it down that way so that it's easy for us. I know the Fenimore and Prospect had been even the subject of a prior study, even before the walking safety assessment, I believe. So this has been a problem for a long time. Since this has happened, I have happened to pass by a, an accident that had happened shortly before I got there, a car coming off the road. This is a dangerous intersection. But I want to just tell the board how critical, I think, this discussion is to our continued planning and our continued attention, because this is pedestrian and bicycle and, to some extent, automotive safety that we're talking about. I mean, this is literally the lives and deaths of village residents. So I urge you to prioritize this in the way that I think it deserves.
Yeah. I live on Prospect Avenue 20-something years, and when my kids were little, I would always carry them and run across Fenimore and Prospect, up until the point where they were very embarrassed that I was picking them up. Because it's just a really, really bad corner. People gun it up the hill coming from Post Road, and when they crest the hill, they're almost at the crosswalk. And they have a hard time slowing down. And if you're going, especially from Northern Prospect to Southern Prospect across Fenimore, it's very hard to see cars coming because of the way cars are parked. So the solution that Matt came up with was to kind of put a bump out on the side there. And this way, you could decrease the distance between corners. And actually, you know, you'd be outside, you could see better what was coming in each direction, and to create a crosswalk there. And to do what we do with the crosswalks, put the signs up that say, you know, pedestrians have the right of way.
Yep.
So that, so I think, Victor, you just shared your screen?
Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the bump out there. And, you know, actually, you know, you nicely landscape it. People complain about that, that corner right there because cars are parked all the way almost to the corner. And if you have a big SUV or a big pickup truck, it's hard to see around it. So you're halfway in the street before you've made the decision whether to dash across or not. I remember, I'm sure, as some of the longtime residents of that community remember, there was a pretty horrible accident years ago with a man on a motorcycle. And it was very unfortunate. Now, getting away from this one, going to the Old Post Road one, which is not as far down the road, you know, I live around there now, and I see kids and families and a lot of kids by themselves and kids on a bike, and it's a free fall down Old Post Road. So, you know, those are two that I think, you know, really are... An accident waiting to happen, just to use a cliche that I hope never happens. So, you know, I want to echo what Kelly said, you know, if we have an opportunity to fix this one now, and this has been going on, I mean, you could ask Mrs. Desmond, who lives over there and has lived over there for 40-plus years, this has been going on forever. So, you know, I urge us to take an action and finally fix this and give the people crossing that street and that neighborhood a fighting chance. And the only detriment is, is that it's going to slow down cars. You know, so the only, you know, the only complaint people are going to have is that they're going to have to go slower, because the bump out, you know, when you do a bump out, you know, even if you haven't narrowed the lane, it's an impediment that people see and they slow down. And that's pretty well documented. So it'll be both slowing down and giving people a better opportunity to cross the street.
Tom, I just want to add that the village, only in the past couple of years, learned that this was a village road. And so we immediately, you know, with the board's support, lowered the speed limit there from 30 to 25, which, you know, has done something. I just want everyone to realize that we're doing the inexpensive stuff first. We really are acting quickly on the stuff that can be done immediately, and we did do that immediately. But this is a capital project, and I think it'll be the longer-term solution that will really help here. When Tom talks about old, like, old post, the
Old Post Road.
Old Post Road. Really, that's a route that kids take to get to school, to central school. And so unfortunately, that's a road with no sidewalk. And so that's what we need to have Matt look at, is getting some kind of pedestrian walkway there on that road, whether it's by putting in a curb or, right now, we have a painted lane for bicyclers and walkers, but it's really, it doesn't do much to keep kids safe. So that's where we're headed on those two, anyway.
Any quick questions?
Yeah, I just have, I have a question. So on the Palmer side of Fenimore, on the Palmer side of that intersection, we're going to reduce the parking, so there will be fewer parking spaces up to the corner? Is that correct?
No, 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 no. I think that's where, I think that's how it is now, Nora?
Well, but there's... Yeah, well, there, there are cars there now, there are cars shown there.
Okay, yeah.
You know, it's not a driving lane. And I think that's, I mean, I hate this intersection, and I go out of my way to go to one of the other roads so that I can avoid this, but sometimes I forget. And I think that's also a problem, trying to creep out at the traffic coming from Palmer and Fenimore. So it looks to, I just want, I just want to check to see where these white lines and the curve that say parking, I mean, the parking is going to be oriented farther away from the corner.
That's what, you know, you're right, Nora, that's what it looks like. And it is difficult to park around there, because I did at one point live in my sojourn through this village, lived at 151 Fenimore Road. But you know what? I'd rather walk I'd rather walk two blocks than, you know, have, have somebody get hurt.
Well, I mean, I anticipate that people will be frustrated. There will be people who are frustrated that parking spaces are removed.
They will.
I, I think that this is
Yeah.
A miserable intersection.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have that argument any day of the week.
You know, unfortunately, Nora, this is always the trade-off. Commission, you know, to help visibility, you have to get rid of cars.
I, I would like to move this to, at least the capital project to the regular agenda next week. But before we move it, I've been, I have a couple of comments and concerns. There's no question that this, along with a lot of other, are may, are really difficult intersections. But the biggest problem is from, is that the cars don't adhere to your 25 miles an hour. And they're either coming up the hill or going down the hill. You know, there, the traffic study actually gave a three-tier approach with a low, medium, and, you know, high-cost approach. What's in front of you on the screen is the high cost, which is about $100,000 to do. At least that's the estimate that would seem to be there. My suggestion is, and I think the crosswalks are a great, are a great thing. They should be put in. But I think we should put in stop signs, similar to what we do on Harrison, Harrison Avenue. And enforce it. I think we need to take the parking away and put, instead of just doing what is shown in the curvatures, if you will, is to put, to put in bollards so people cannot park there. And I think, and try that. And I think that would significantly do several things. The first thing it would do is slow the traffic down. The second, it would open up the view line so that you could see more trying to get, get out or turn into the different roads in the intersection. And I think it can be done less expensively, if you will. We have a significant number of very, a significant number of projects that are being proposed with all high priorities. And so the question is, I think we have to see if there are ways we can accomplish things, maybe not go the most expensive route, but go in a route that is meaningful and accomplishes what we're trying to do. The stop signs would do, would slow the traffic down, which is, which is a big thing. We couldn't do it before, I understood, at least that's what I've been told by others, because we didn't think it was a village road. It is a village road, and so we can do that. We've actually done the stop signs in the crosswalks on county roads in this village. And it works pretty well. Not, it's not 100% because some people don't stop. But we put in stop signs, you know, yield to pedestrians, or you can put in a full stop, either one. And that, that would do significant things. If, in the picture that was just shown, on the harbor side of the intersection, it shows taking out parking, but, you know, but not doing anything there. So putting the bollards in would keep people from parking there. I've, you know, I've been there. That intersection is not a good intersection. You have trucks that park, you know, in the, you know, right next to the intersection, which blocks the, your view line. So people go trying to get in and out of the different things have to, you know, be, you know, difficult. So, you know, on either side of the, where it says Fenimore Road, that, that would need to be blocked off. The, on the, there are normally a lot of cars parked on the Palmer Avenue side of that intersection on both sides. You know, and I don't think that the, the bump outs in and of themselves are going to slow the traffic down significantly. So I would be much more in favor of doing that, which could be done relatively quickly. Would require a lot of engineering study. It could be implemented and, you know, we can see the results very quickly. Okay, Kelly, have your head up?
You know, I, I just want to talk to that specific issue of stop signs because this comes up a lot. And I have learned through Shannon and through these reports that stop signs are often perceived to be a quick fix. And in fact, they can be counterproductive. So on pages two and four of this report, on this particular intersection, a stop sign is not warranted. The Federal Highway Administration is not warranted at this location. I mean, it's just plain as day. It does, it will not work. And then further on page five, it says, FHWA guidance also suggests that uncontrolled marked sidewalks should not be installed in close proximity to traffic signals. The signalized intersection of Palmer Avenue in Fenimore Road is located approximately 300 feet from the study intersection, which is not close enough to warrant an issue. It is unreasonable to assume pedestrians would walk 300 feet away to the signalized crossing and walk 300 feet back to the, back to the crossing. It's just the, when you put a stop sign, I, I've seen this on Cove Road and Orienta. What happens is a pedestrian and cars expect the other, the, the oncoming traffic to stop. And so they're not as cautious and they may go into the intersection and someone coming won't stop. It's, it, it can be more dangerous than, than helpful when put in the wrong place. And I think our experts have told us this is the wrong intersection for stop signs.
I, I think the, the optimal word that you spoke to Kelly is experts.
Yep.
And I think that we have to start listening to our experts and not improvise. And yes, you know, it might be more expensive, but good government's expensive. Saving people's lives is expensive. I don't want to skimp and save on that. And I want to make sure that when we fix something, it's fixed. And not that we, you know, experimented or improvised to save a couple of dollars and somebody ends up getting hurt that we didn't fix anything. So this is why you hire experts. And this is why you listen to experts, you know, whether it be your budget expert or your village manager or the traffic consultant who does this every day of his life. Somebody else on board? Well, in answer to all of that, I understand it. If you don't want to put the stop signs in, you can put the stop sign that says yield to pedestrians in the middle of the road. And that has worked. And it works, it works on, you know, Harrison Avenue very well with a very high success rate of people stopping and slow, and slowing the, you know, traffic down and allowing pedestrians to cross, which is a much more, a, a much more used intersection and, and with much more traffic than right there. So, you know, and I think that that does give a really, you know, good fix to it. And I'm not trying to say, you know, let's skip money. But I think in terms of this, there are numerous intersections throughout this village that could very easily say, this is what we should have as well. And that starts to raise the question of, you know, how we should try and do things that we can really accomplish, you know, on a wider scale. And I don't think, it doesn't preclude if it doesn't work doing the bump outs, but I think it can work and it's worth a try. Okay, you've made your case. Nora and Victor?
Go ahead. I thought you were muted.
Somebody, please go.
Go, Nora.
Why don't you go, Victor?
Okay, my, my first question is, well, I'll really minimize my introduction because we all have stories with this. Mine will be limited to saying, this was a priority from the board when I joined many years ago. And we've moved to the point of, yes, getting a consultant. I actually agreeing it was a priority. And we have a project that is October 18, 19, finally kind of in design. So, and it was already discussed by this board.
Yep.
So unfortunately, we, we didn't move forward. Let's now move forward. So let's move on how to do it. Let's not go back on, 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 on the priorities because otherwise we'll, we're not going to make any progress on, on this work sessions.
Okay, well.
So my, so I have specific questions. That's, that's, that's my goal. Please don't interrupt me, Mayor.
Well, okay.
Just lost my turn of thought. Just don't interrupt me, please. Okay, my first question is, Jerry, is this on, on, on the new list of, of capital projects that we just received?
The coming? I don't think so.
This one is not?
No.
And this, this is a good example of where we have a project of, from design on October 19. And it should, it should be then made part, and I, I think it was a priority then. So it's, so, so this is a good example of safety measures.
I'm sorry, I do have it. We do have it. Yeah, we do have it. We do have it.
Where, where is it?
The manager's office. And it's on the list.
Page 10?
It's on the list. I have the list, Victor. I have the big list. That's what I work on.
Okay. Okay. Manager's office, manager's office, I, I have. Oh, yes, yes, it is there. But it has, it, it, it doesn't have a price tag. Or does it?
Yeah, it has a price tag of 150.
Yep.
But that was for a signal.
Yep, 150,000. It was in, yeah.
Prospect Traffic Study?
Yep. And it's, the criteria scale is 370.
Yes. So why is it different from the project? That's why we're trying to get to.
Prospect Traffic Signal.
Project score is 150. What is the price tag? Now, where do we see?
The price tag's 150,000, Victor.
Is that in the blue line? Is that?
I gotta pull that book. I don't, I gotta work off that book.
Okay, the problem with the book is I don't think it does have, it doesn't have price tags.
This one has a price tag of 150, but I think, if, 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 if my memory serves me correctly, that was when we were talking about putting a traffic signal there, which we're not talking about now. Now it's about 100 for this bump out, so.
Right, so that, that's, that's why I embrace this because we have a project in front of us that then doesn't coincide with all the work that has been going on with our capital right, right. So, so let, let's, let's really now clean this document because otherwise we, it's going to be very hard to make very significant decisions. This one is $100,000. So then, before we finalize this document, let's, let's bring, let's go to, through this project very quickly and say, and see which, which is really the one that we are including on the list and then have in front of us. Because I really got, that's why I, I couldn't find it here because the price tag didn't match. So then the point is clear that is we're, we're talking about a $90,000 project. Is that correct? Let me stop sharing. I just want to know what, what, what type of money we're talking.
About 100,000.
All in, it's about 100.
Yeah, but, but it, it's for this. So I was trying to look at the details and, and, and seeing if, how, how we can actually then bid that. It, this is a work project, right? So it could be beyond, around that figure. It could be below. The, the, the idea is how to do it is, it's going to be just one project to be bid out. And if that's, and that, let, let's, let me just answer that question while I, while I pull up the, the, the other document, which is the, the cost. This is the one I need.
The answer is yes. It's one project by itself that we need to design from AKRF in order to bid, a design and specifications to put it out to bid. So we get the lowest price, the lowest responsible price. Yes, that's correct.
So how much? So this would be the price of the actual cost, not, or designing it? Is it just a design?
No, that's the construction estimate, Victor.
Okay. And how much is, then is the engineering design?
16,000 of the $91,000.
Which is this first?
No, at the bottom, at the bottom.
Which is this one?
10,000 plus 10% design. 16,000, oh, six, one.
Okay.
Okay.
So essentially, this board would need to approve this. And then, and then that you move forward and, and bid this project under this concept.
Yeah, but you're not approving, yeah, but you're not approving a cost. You're approving, you're proving to go out to bid on the cost estimate presented before you. And then it would come back to the board to approve the actual bid.
Correct, correct, yes. Yeah, but, but my, actually, we, we will be, it would be, the first step is really just authorizing the design because I'm sure it's going to come back different. Or it has to be updated.
The design is correct. That's correct.
Okay. So then what do we need to do then? Have a resolution prepared for next week, two weeks?
Yep.
Okay, that's the case. Thank you for clarifying. I think the concept makes sense or something. It's really, you know, some sounds pricey, but if, if, if that's what the experts are telling us, and if we go through the bid process, what else can we do? So with those answers, I, I will be in favor of putting this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
I would too. I'm, but I'm sort of with Victor that I think we, we've got to really figure out how, how we're going to do the capital projects and what projects we're going to be able to do. Because we have so many projects that are mandated. And we have other projects that are really important, but they're not mandated. And we might prefer to do the non-mandated projects, but we don't have that opportunity. So I think we've got to really be mindful of what our, you know, set, set our capital budget priorities and try and stick to them.
Okay, but you're, you're, you're okay. We'll put this on for next week?
Yes.
Okay, Jerry, a couple of quick questions. When we get the funding from the federal government, the COVID relief from the America Act, could this be used to that?
I'd have to really check. It was a project that we put, we put off last year. So we might be able to use that, but it may not be the case. I, I can tell you, Mayor, though, that the, something like this is, is, is what you would, you know, what we'd use for, for future, for future bonding. Because this is going to last a long time. This, this corner, once it's approved, is going to last a long, long time. It's not a replacement of a rock or something like that.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next to be, one B. The foil policy. Jerry, we will hold this off for you.
So the, the foil policy.
I'm sorry, sorry, Mayor. We have two projects before us or more. We just decided, look at the first one. How about the Post Road?
The proposal for Post Road was to do the engineering.
No, no, we need a study. We, we need, Mayor, we need studies on the other, the other areas because we don't have studies. We just have walking assessments which are.
Right. And, and Matt Carmody participated in some, if not all of those walking safety assessments. So he has an idea and notes from those experiences. But he didn't do the kind of report, you know, the expert report that he did on Fenimore.
Right. But we need the same.
Yeah, basically, I got some, I spoke with Matt about what potential cost could be for him to go out in the field, take the measurements, use the, the DOT quick estimator like he did for the Fenimore Prospect project to kind of figure out what some cost could be. That involves fieldwork. You know, we have staff time, analysis time, and there's costs associated with that. The old Post Road is a little more in-depth because that could involve, you know, construction of retaining walls, you know, taking, going into the right of way a little bit to build sidewalks. So that's a bit more extensive of a analysis to figure out what the, the ultimate cost of a project like that could be, which will likely be in the several hundreds of thousands of dollars for a poster.
And Jerry?
Well, I think the next step, we want to bring this to the board's attention to see if there is a desire for, for us to work with AKRF and Matt to get that additional information so we can include it in our capital funding projects.
So to get, to get to this level?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, to get to that level. The three walking assessments should be converted to actual study.
How much, how, how much would it cost to produce this study? Can you get us that for next two weeks?
Well, I, I spoke to Matt and got, you know, ballpark estimates. I didn't, I didn't want to have him go through the process of, you know, getting full detailed estimates if this wasn't something the board wanted us to move forward at this time, but I can.
My question specifically is, with, with something like this, we can make decisions. Are we going, are we going, how, how? Are we going, how much would it cost us to get to this level again, having him put it in clean paper?
About thirty thousand for the three.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. It's in the backup.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, I mean, I got ballpark pricing from Matt for this work. I mean, I think for all the investigatory and planning work.
Twenty, twenty-five to forty thousand.
Forty thousand dollars.
Yep.
And he agreed with that, as he thought that was a fair estimate for the scope of work I was asking about.
To get to this level for all the projects, that's why, it's very unclear, it's just one line.
So to get to the level for all the projects is twenty-five to forty. He goes through each project.
Do we have it in the budget? That's the next question.
The engineering budget?
Yeah, can we, can we tap thirty to forty thousand from our current budget for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have too many items in the engineering budget, Victor. Because, you know, I hawk the consulting engineer, so we have money in that line to be able to do these studies.
Do you want to prepare something so we can approve this next week, two weeks?
Yes, I'd like that. And bear in mind, we have a surplus with over thirty-seven percent in it. That isn't just, this is the people's mind.
Well, we do have a policy to how to use it, so let's not, as long as it's used with that criteria, that's what it's for. And some of this.
No, 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 I'd just like to say, the policy is to keep it at thirty percent, and to go under thirty percent, there is.
There's a criteria of how you use the thirty percent as well.
I was speaking. Let me finish, please.
No, we're just having a dialogue. Okay, please finish.
The policy was, if we were going to go under thirty percent, there was a criteria to go under thirty percent, but it is over thirty-seven percent. So I don't think that it has to fit that criteria.
No, Mayor, Mayor, please reread it, go back to it. It does, this is based on the controller's office. It was a lot of work. There is a line, a clear criteria of how you use it before you even got to the thirty percent. So please review it. I can pull it up, but it'll take too long. I can try to use that.
I would bet the traffic safety would fall under, but I'll look in the interim. There's no need to beat the gates here.
So.
That's what we have organized the way of doing things.
Yeah, what I'll do tomorrow is I'll reach out to Matt Carmody, ask him for some official quotes to implement these studies and work.
Okay.
Bring back to the board next meeting.
Much appreciated, everyone. Thank you very much. And can I just say to Victor and Tom's point that we do have a surplus and we can use the surplus, but we're probably going to be using it for projects that we haven't perfectly anticipated. So I think we need to be mindful. We don't want to just, you know, use up our surplus in six months and then be unable to use the surplus if we have an emergency. So I do think we really have a lot on our plate, and we have to, you know, we went through the budget process, but we now really need to nail down the capital projects that we want to do and that we actually can do. And that we have to do, and that we have to do. I think we're all in agreement on that.
It's on our agenda now, finally, and thank you for all this great work. So once we discuss this, for example, we could clean up those details. It's very fine print, and that's where we're going to need a couple, a few minutes to go through things, because, you know, I can do my best, but we have questions. So let's try to get to this, if not this week, next week, colleagues.
Okay, it'll be on here.
Perhaps, perhaps it might be best to schedule a meeting just to do the capital budget. It's very, there's a lot in it. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of effects that it.
Yeah, we have to move on with the agenda.
And can I also say, could we get a bigger printout? A larger font size, please. Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it for you.
Thank you all.
If we're going to get a larger printout, it would be helpful, and you're right. I know we have to move on, but we.
You can't get off the damn.
Just stop that. If we're going to get a larger printout, it would be helpful in the ranking to put dollars in one column at the beginning or the end, because you have to keep flipping from one set of numbers to another set of numbers. And it's easier if it's all on one page, so you have some idea of what the implications are.
Jerry, one B, foil policy.
Mayor, the foil policy of the village should obviously be what we've been doing now. We respond to those quick, easy, not very difficult to find or to deliver foil requests, but then we get some that are voluminous, that are very large, that, you know, heaven forbid we say, no, it's too much work for us, and we get, you know, called out for that. We need time to respond to these foils. And so what we've done during the pandemic was to make sure that we work with staff, and I communicate with staff, especially Sally and Augie, to see what the timeline is to get these items to the requester. And that's really, this is a policy. This is a policy that's developed by the board. But regarding staff input, all I can say is that during the pandemic, we've responded the best we can. People, you know, are upset that they don't get their four request immediately, but eventually they'll get it, and we work on it in the time that's permitted and allowed based on all the other work we're doing. I mean, look at the capital budget, for example. There's a ton of work we put into the capital budget, and I know, based on the discussions we've had so far, that I have hours and hours and hours still to put into it, to fine tune it, to make sure, to go back. The documents we provided were supposed to be discussed in June of last year. That's when I presented them to the board. We have not discussed them. It is June of the next year already. So our timing is not, you know, created, made up, or fictional. Our timing is when we're responding to four requests sincere, and based on our workload, we do the best that we can to provide. I mean, I know today, we must have received probably a dozen, again, four requests. When you get hit that hard with so many four requests, that really, my question, you know, really, why the involvement, why the, why the attention to certain items that people ask for? I don't, I couldn't, it's hard for me to describe it.
Well, there was twenty-one, I believe, twenty-one foil requests from Mr. Tigard over the weekend. Which is, you know, it's voluminous. Bob, Mr. Spalzino.
Yes, Mayor.
Recently, the village has won a litigation case on somewhat of this issue against Ms. Goldstein, where she was asking for voluminous material, and the court sided with the village when we said it was over burdensome. How far does that over burdensome, over burdensome get us? You know what I mean? Is this now case law?
It is now case law. The judge decided that the document request, which we identified as requesting over fifty-two thousand documents was not sufficiently defined to satisfy the requirements of foil.
Bob, can you explain, has that been a change in the law? That's, I understand, the law has been for decades. Correct?
There hasn't been a statutory change in foil.
Or the judge's decision doesn't change that. That has been the rule. That's been the law. And the decisions that follow that line.
I believe the decision is consistent with the law. That's correct.
But were there decisions prior to that?
There were.
There were, okay. Okay. So Jerry, you're basically saying that, you know, you want to handle it the way you've been handling it?
That's correct. Unless staff has a different impression or idea, we get together to discuss foils regularly, and I know that our treasurers, staff, as well as my office assistant, and HR, and the building department, and the planning department, and the police department, and even public works, get involved when we need to get involved, when they need to get involved to respond to our request. And they are all over the place. They're across the board. I mean, it's, you know, what did you spray for mosquitoes last week for a request? Or can you give me the spray records for the past ten, fifteen years? Those are the kinds of things that we get, and it takes time. I can tell you what we did last week, but I can't tell you what we did ten, fifteen years ago. In some cases, that's the kind of request that we're getting.
Throw sand into gears. Mr. Natchez.
Jerry, will the municipal, municipality five solve part of, or a large part of this problem?
No, I think, I think the only solution to this problem is to have the serial request or stop requesting. That's the solution to the problem.
I understand that, but you, as I understand the software package that you can, it would be easier for a staff member to retrieve information from all departments quicker. Is that a fair statement or not?
That's what I care about. I care about the staff members doing their work more efficiently. You're exactly right. I do not care about helping a serial requester who, just like the mayor just said, throw sand. I'm sorry, that's what I feel. That's what I want, that's my response.
I understand, but.
I know you understand that.
This has nothing to do with, I'm not talking about an individual, I'm talking.
It does for me, though. It does for me. It has a lot to do with me, because we wouldn't have to have a foil policy or an issue or a problem with staff if we didn't have a serial requester constantly throwing twenty-one foil requests over the weekend? In any way, do you think that that's reasonable? In any way?
Jerry, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking.
I'm talking about that, though.
I understand, I understand what you're talking about.
And municipal five will help us.
My question was very simple. Will municipal, municipality five help staff retrieve things faster and easier?
Municipality five will help staff keep track of applications, improve the work efficiency of the departments, especially in the building and planning department. It will help with the retention of records. It will help with the other items that staff struggled with. I am not going to recommend to the board that they spend sixty thousand dollars unless staff is going to benefit from it, and staff will benefit from it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think in some substance, what you're saying is that sixty thousand dollars would be to staff's benefit, but in my view, and this is just my opinion, that's not going to solve the problem that we had talking about today.
No way, no way, no way.
Victor, you had your head up.
Jerry, to close this item, before us is the board's, the village's policy, which was adopted by this board. Are there any changes suggested, or do we just leave it as is, and you can handle it? Is that, that's the question, really?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Jerry, there was some company that was consulting, or not consulting, but there was a, I know a website that I looked at, that they had some guidance on foil, and I wonder, is there a a software product or something that will help, could help the staff to answer foils? I noticed in the Goldstein decision that we recently received, the language was that, you know, burdensome isn't, isn't an excuse to, or isn't a valid reason, you know, to not provide foil records. However, the specificity of the request, or lack thereof, is a reason not to answer foil requests. And so to the extent, you know, there's some software that can handle requests in terms of, you know, here's what you're looking for, and staff could say, you know, we direct you here, or, you know, if you search this municipality website, you will be able to find the records that way, and take the burden off staff and put it on the foil requester to use the software or search, you know, appropriately as the software would allow. Would that be possible?
So in my experience, the individuals we direct to the website or to other areas either can't find it, can't navigate, their computer doesn't have the requirements or the hardware capability, so it's not going to be, it's not going to be a benefit. It's not going to be a benefit. People send us emails saying, I want this, I want that, I want this. They don't even put it into the, you know, into the Destiny system, which is what we have to help us manage. And then recently, staff looked into another software platform, which was exactly the same as what we have. So self-directing people would be ideal, but in our experience, in this office's experience, it doesn't work. It doesn't work, because they don't want to go there. They want us to develop, to copy, to scan, to do all those things.
I know, it's a weird dynamic. The other thing that always bothers me about these foil requests is that, you know, my neighbor may have a kitchen remodel going on with permits, and the foil requester may say, I want, you know, all the permits on that house next door, and then the neighbor won't ever know that someone's poking around trying to get that. And I wonder if, as part of our foil policy, it would be extra burdensome on staff, because, believe me, that's not what I'm trying to do, but just to involve the community more in what's going on, inform people, hey, a foil request has been submitted on your property or on you, and just, you know, we're providing you this heads up, so that you're aware of it.
Yeah, that would, if I'm that homeowner remodeling my kitchen, I'd want to know, you know.
I would too. I would too.
But I don't know how that would work, unless Augie and Sally can. Any idea on that?
Municipality five is a start.
That would help, find documents, but as far as knowing what's out there, all foil requests are public. Not all. Most foil requests are public. Police records, we do not make public. We keep those confidential. If there's a reason why someone needs to know something about a police record, then we look at that. But other than that, all foil requests are public, but you would have to know to look. If you look for a request weekly, you could see if someone is requesting information on your home. The other thing that we do do is if a resident calls to complain or about another resident, we do not give the resident that's asking for the information on who called on them. We do not give them that information. That's, that's a privacy issue. So if I called on my neighbor, and my neighbor wanted to know who called on them, we would not let them know who it was, but just that someone did call.
I think another issue is that residents sometimes like to drag their local government into issues that they may be having with their neighbors. And we try, we try to avoid that.
Yeah.
You know, it's a slippery slope.
Yeah, I hear you.
I think this point of specificity is really key. I went through the last month or so of foil requests the other day. Took me a while. And it's not the board's decision. It's really staff managing. I don't think they pass the specificity test. But even the specificity documents.
I think that's right.
Also, they're just actually requests for information. In many countries, you have a right to petition your government for this and that. Those governments, as actually many developing countries have that, or many states actually, and you do have to respond, but that's not the law in New York. So many, many, many foil responses don't follow that, too. Nonetheless, unfortunately, and I see the hard work for Sally, you know, you have to go through them one by one. And of course, the other option would be to, you want to get a soft developer, artificial intelligence to go through all this. I'd be happy to, on a site note, invest with Kelly, and, you know, we'll hit the jackpot.
It's expensive, by the way.
Right, but I think you cannot even defer that to artificial intelligence, because there's a lot of issues with that as well. So unfortunately, staff, you know, we just go through the criterias, try to fine tune, make the processes you need. If you need to come back to us, it will help, but, you know, it really comes down to those two. We're going in circles on this, so I think at least at this point, let's just move forward and apply those rules. And defer with your management to that.
I think Victor's right, you know, I think in some senses, in some sense, and I applaud Augie and Sally, they often go above and beyond the call of duty and try to get people stuff that, you know, their foil didn't entitle them to, because it was not specific, overbroad. And I've seen that. I've seen them ask for clarification, but you know, that's not your job. You know, you just, you know, follow the law and sometimes you do that and you end up the hand, you, you get, you get, you get bit for that. So, you know, but I do appreciate how hard staff works at this. But, uh, so we're just gonna leave the policy as it is. And the next up is PLL twenty twenty.
One sec, one sec, Mayor. I'm sorry, but just to wrap this up, I have also seen that sometimes they, if, if the request is a specific from anybody, I'm not asking any, not, not anybody's particular. And staff sometimes gives them to them very quickly. Sometimes they have to be more careful about it or then, then it delays, but i- i- it all comes down to if it's a document such and such by this date, then, then it actually should not be even delayed, right? Or it should go to the, through the process or maybe screening those that are really definite and whoever it is. Now, hold it, put, put them on, put them on that track to be responsive so that we're not, we're not, we're trying to just have a policy that covers everything.
That's our policy. We're all nodding yes.
Oh, shut up. I'll shut up now.
Okay. Let's just try and get a few more done before we have to do. I'd like to do PLL two about the setbacks, but I don't think that that, I, I'd like to give that more time.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, good. Good. So let's, let's. How about we go to one H, location and funding opportunities, authorizing for living memorial, the, 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 no backup carried forward. This is the living memorial to honor the municipal employees for what they did during the COVID nineteen pandemic. I know that both the tree committee and the the arts council have worked very hard on this. Jerry, do you know where we are now?
I don't, Mayor. I lost track of this. What I can do is develop a, a a memo for the, for the board for next meeting to make sure that I reviewed the, the request, reviewed the the proposal with the, the planting of the trees and other items that would be added to the living memorial. And make sure that I have a, a full comprehensive understanding of it at the next meeting.
Okay, let's work back. One G, so, so we'll leave that on for the next meeting. One G, parking fine collection strategies carried forward from January.
Right. So as I've said, and I'll let Dan take over after I'm, I'm done, but I just wanted to introduce this item and the fact that at my previous municipality, we hired a company out of, out of Connecticut that went after parking fines for us. The municipality didn't have much in the way of outstanding parking fines. I think they had two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars of which we were able to collect a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it was a, it was a process to go out to bid that had to be approved by the judiciary. And once it was approved by judiciary, I was able to put it out to bid and, and bring in those fines. We didn't have to do anything except just collect the checks. So there are companies specifically geared towards the collection of parking fines. Mr. Stoneoff can give you some of the numbers of what's outstanding. Some of it is, is significant as far as age and just recently in the state of New Jersey, they passed a law that anything over ten years, they were, they were excusing and they weren't able. They weren't able, they weren't allowing municipalities and others to collect parking fines, so. I'm not sure if they're going to do that in New York. Everybody copies each other, so they may. But Dan, you can talk a little bit about this in our conversations.
Jerry, you're recommending I, uh, option four that.
Yeah.
In your memo, was that, is that what I'm hearing?
I forget the number, but I'll, I'll pull it up now. I'll pull it up now.
That's the one that's a report to collection agencies.
Yep.
Sorry, I think we, we have a, a fair number out of uncollected fines right now. We still maintain about a ninety-two, ninety-three percent collection rate, even during the pandemic year, which is, you know, pretty, pretty good. I mean, the, I spoke with our citation management service last week just to get myself up to speed and the national average still remains somewhere at eighty to eighty-five percent that gets collected, so we are ahead of the curve when compared to other municipalities. You know, in, in New York State, and one of the reasons why I think you want to pursue the fourth option are, our biggest hammer in New York State is that once someone has three or more unpaid parking tickets within eighteen month period, their registration gets suspended. So if they want to renew, renew their registration, they've got to take care of the parking tickets.
So when we, you say we have a, you know, great collection ratio. From the time of issuance to time of collection, is that everything within a year, two years, three years?
I, I, I think it's within a year, but I, I, oh, sorry.
What I'm trying to get to is if we want to hire, you know, another firm, are we sending everything to them or just things that have been delayed for, you know, a year or two years or three years? I don't know what the cutoff is. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, I, I think, so I can get an answer on the timeframe that we, that the tickets are being paid in. I, I think it majority is within a year, if not less.
I had two. We went back two years.
Yeah.
In my previous specs.
Yeah, and, and I think in, in New York State, because of, if, if a registration is not suspended, it becomes a bit difficult to collect because again, the hammer is not there.
Dan, hold on. I want to, I want to make sure that I understand, Trustee Natchez. So to go back to collections, you're saying, that's what the question is, right? How far back do we start? Is that what you're saying?
No, how, how, how long do we wait before we turn it over to them? In other words, if you write a ticket, you're not going to give it to a collection agency.
Yeah.
It's only when you don't collect it within a certain amount of time. So are we saying it's a one-year period or a two-year period? That, that the village would pursue it and then after that, give it to a collection agency?
We'd have to check. I'd have to check with judiciary, but when they advised me in Jersey, it was two years. I couldn't do anything newer than two years. I couldn't include anything newer than two years.
Yeah, I think.
Outstanding for two or more years.
Yeah, it seems like that will probably line up with the registration renewal timeframe. I don't know what the registration renewal timeframe is in New Jersey. It's two years in, in New York. So that's why it seems to make sense that you want to look at something over a certain amount of time because it wouldn't affect, again, in New York, the, the registration. I mean, I, I've looked at the, the list. I think we'd have to kind of look at the list with, if we brought an, an agency on to help with that. We have to look at the list because there's a lot of stuff that there's just no way it could be collected. For instance, with a lot of manual tickets that are handwritten, there, everything's entered into a system by now its passport and they track it that way. There's a misinterpretation of a license weight number. And it's, it's going to go nowhere, but we'd have to, you know, go through that with everything.
Well, I, I think what you're asking for is a direction of going, you know, of doing this or not. I think the answer at least from my vantage point, I think it's a good idea to go to a collection agency. But I'd like trying to find what we are actually going to do. And not there's a fee to, that, for them to do it or they take a percentage of what they do. There, it's a big difference from my view.
You know what? I, I, I agree, Dan. I think my understanding, I thought from some prior backup a long time ago, was that it's a percentage, not a fee. I mean, some of these tickets may be, you know, invalid and hard to collect, but it, it's free money. I mean, this just seems like a way to get some revenue that otherwise we're just forfeiting. So this seems to me, you know, quite promising and thank you for bringing it to us, to our attention.
So if we could ask you all to pursue this and come back with specific proposals, I think that would work very well.
We'll, we'll do, I'll, I'll check with judiciary as well. I'll check with the, the, with Bonnie Castarella and the New York State court system to make sure that the, the parameters that we're looking at are similar to what I'm used to.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so sort of one half discussion of scheduling advice accounts executive session meetings. I know back, Nora brought this up on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And I, I, I hear what you're saying, Trustee Lucas, and I, 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 that's why I asked to have the executive session on tonight. At the end, you know, which, which might be, you know, hard because we'll be a little tired, but I think it's important that we work through the issues in front of us. And get the people's business done kind of first. My suggestion is we see how tonight works out. Because, you know, the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, between all liaison commitments and commitments in other, you know, municipal work, it's really hard to find a night when all five of us, you know, can, can do this. So that would be my suggestion, but you know, if, if I, I'm open to other reasonable suggestions.
I mean, I could say, let's see how it goes tonight. It's just, you know, we have stuff on, it's June fourteenth and we have stuff on from January twenty-fourth. And so you know, we're not going to get through tonight's agenda tonight. And I know it's hard to schedule a second meeting, but I think we are, you know, we are very, very behind and I think either we have to do less or finish our assignments.
Let me just say this before you go to death, but because I really don't want to do this, but would there be, maybe in July, any interest in, it, it's like, it's going to hurt coming out of my mouth. Any interest in doing a Saturday?
We're going to have to be careful in July. I actually have a, a trip, a vacation planned to see my son and my daughter, so July is.
I'm going with the bottom of July too. All right, I just.
So the suggestion is we all, we all meet on Mondays every, every second, you know, every other Monday, basically. And we don't have, most committees do not meet on Mondays. So maybe for, we can do a couple of Mondays, we can clear a lot of stuff up. I E, done on the, on the normal meeting Mondays, but do work sessions and you know, and executive sessions on every, you know, on the, on the other Monday. And I think if we can do that for, you know, two or three times, I think we can clean up a lot of stuff.
I would, I'm looking at the calendar and I think, I don't think we should meet Saturdays because I'm not, I really don't think that's fair to staff.
That's true.
But as in terms of July, there's one free. No, in terms of June, well, in terms of June, there's one more meeting. In July, we are scheduled to meet on the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. So I know we weren't going to do that, but the calendar still has us meeting twice.
Yeah.
And it has us meeting twice in August as well.
I, I, I'd be for keeping that and doing the best we can.
Well, is there anybody that can make the, it's, it's, uh, the second meeting is July the twenty-sixth?
I can make that. I, I'm actually going away July twenty-seventh because I, I knew we had that meeting, so I scheduled going away from the twenty-seventh to the Saturday. Yeah, I can make July twenty-sixth.
Sally, can you clarify?
This is a reminder, those two extra meetings were just for AP. So if you wanted to do things those evenings, you would have the time because they were just scheduled for.
Yeah, but actually the calendars has, has work session on regular. Yeah, I know that's what we planned, but the calendar has it as a regular. Yeah.
So a question, could everybody meet next Monday, a week from today? And, and, and make that for the capital budget?
I can't meet next Monday. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
I think we could start the twenty-eighth with capital, maybe even start a little early. I'll try, for example. Start a little early and just dedicate an hour to that.
Okay, let, let's just do one thing at a time. That's not a bad idea. Let's circle back to that. But how about the Nora's suggestion of July, what was it, twenty-sixth, Lord?
Twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth.
I can make that.
So can I.
I can make that.
Victor?
I'll try. I'm, I'm booked up.
Okay, so.
I could, I mean, I could, I could do it, so.
I could do it too. All right.
Let's see where we are. Let's really try to push the June, July, twelfth.
And let, let's, can, can we think about meeting at four on, in two weeks, just to give us an extra hour?
I could try.
Well, look, you know what? I would say, let, let's, four might be fine, but if we end up going till midnight tonight, going from four to midnight is really not okay with me.
Hopefully, we won't have to do that.
Yeah, let's see how long this executive session after the meeting goes.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we, we'll, we'll tentatively talk about. Well, let, let's schedule four anyway. On the twenty-eighth. And so we'll do four on the twenty-eighth and we'll do the twenty-sixth of July.
We're do, we're starting at four with the capital budget.
We'll do the capital budget for now.
Okay, good.
Hey Jerry, so you got that? Okay.
For next time and then, right, I got it.
Big print capital budget.
The senior citizen version.
I'll come pick it up.
I have one also. No problem.
I, I got the senior citizen discount at a Dunkin' Donuts the other day.
Home the truth.
Did you ask or did they just offer?
They just did it, which was even worse. It was based upon your observations.
When, when you're making a big copy, please make me one too, even with my glasses. I'm really struggling with this one.
All right, so we made some progress there. We can take that off the agenda now. Okay, let's go to the stuff that the first is one J, Hickory Grove sidewalk. The town of Americ, I'm talking about doing a sidewalk on Hickory Grove when I was a town council. So this has been kicking around the town's agenda for years. They're ready to pull the trigger now and they want us to participate for our section. Jerry, is that sum and substance?
That's correct, Mayor. Everything is done except for the contribution from the village approved by the board of trustees to complete the project and do our section of that improvement.
So ours would be sixty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Yep.
What does the board think?
You know, I guess I assume they did seeker on this. I mean, we're kind of, I, I, what I think that you know, it's connecting to a piece of sidewalk we've already built. So it seems kind of wasteful to build a portion in the town and then have the gap in the village that gets to the rest of it in the village. But it also seems like we should have been in on this earlier because it's a pretty big expense for us.
As far as I think they've been asking us since March or February, but I don't know if there were discussions about Hickory Grove prior to me coming to Americ.
I don't remember prior to coming from Americ, but maybe, I mean, I don't, when I was with the town of Americ, maybe they were talking about it. I don't remember.
They say that we have been involved, but of course I couldn't speak to that. So it could have been a previous manager who may have had a meeting with Steve and, and the engineer, whoever that was at the time before Rob was.
An orange, yeah, probably. What, what is the board's troubles?
I'm concerned about the project. You're talking about four houses. We, we spent a lot of money on the sidewalk that where it was actually needed. You know, going, you know, to Palmer Avenue. I don't see a need for it. I understand it would be nice and pretty. You, you have, you know, four driveways in, involved in here. I, I don't. I, there would be a lot more sidewalks that I would have. I, there would be a lot more sidewalks that I would have rate as a much higher priority for this village to put in than for here. And I think that's part of what we need, part of our responsibility. You know, to to do so there, the town is spending the money to do to widen the road and put in sidewalks for their portion, which is fine. I don't think that there is, it warrants that that expenditure from the village. Based upon everything that it's faced and the oversized sheets that Jerry can read with his glasses and we can't read without.
You're right. You know, I've tried, I've tried to get a sense just from looking at the map. Is this a route that likes, you know, school kids use? Is there any way? Do we know anything about, you know, who needs this sidewalk?
It is definitely a route that school kids use going to central. I see kids walking by in the morning. It it isn't as big a route as say, uh, Waverly or, you know, Weaver.
Yeah.
We, it it is a route. I I wouldn't say a lot of our kids, but you know, it's kids walking through the village. Now, I can go either way on this, but.
Tom, when we, when we did the sidewalk from the intersection to Palmer. The big issue was that there were a lot of kids that were walking to the school and that was a dangerous thing, particularly as it approached the railroad bridge. I I don't have a problem with that, you know, here is not, you know. This is not. This is not the prior, from my view, the same issue. You know, if you, if you told me you had thirty houses or forty houses, you know, that use that, that's, that's a whole different issue. But the whole point of the other sidewalks, which we spent, Dan, do you remember how much we spent on that? Was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
With all the sidewalks we did the last couple of years. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's. Yeah, I mean, it's, it gets expensive the longer you go.
So, you know, and we spent the money because there, you know, you had all Baldwin and other areas that were using that area and it was unsafe. Particularly going across two bridges. So, um, you know, in in that, in that weighed heavily, at least in my decision of trying to, you know, set priorities of where we're going.
No, I I understood that. You you made that case before and I I I wasn't saying I wanted to do it. I said I could go either way. And I'm I'm interested in what the other trustees. Positions are. Nora?
I mean, I I'm just, I'm really concerned that there's a lot of sidewalks that we've been asked to do from village residents and we haven't done it. And now this is sort of a whole different, you know, request from a different entity that we're responding to, and I think we should be more proactive and less responsive.
Okay, that's a valid point. Victor?
Let's prioritize before we.
Okay, Kelly?
You know, I agree. I just, I there, I mean, just looking and thinking of our earlier discussion tonight. We've got a lot of residents asking for sidewalks that are heavily trafficked with school kids.
Okay.
This hasn't come up before as a, you know.
It's just Jerry, uh, this falls upon you to let them know.
You know.
That when we're not interested at this point.
And can I say one other thing? The, you know, I guess this is like a specific town initiative because one of the memo says the town has not started any formal outreach to residents regarding the project. It would make sense for the town and village to review and coordinate before going any farther. And I think that's the case. I mean, I'm sure, you know, I know that that's near where I grew up. I, it's a hill, it's a curve. I understand it would be nice to have a sidewalk, but it's not as dangerous as old Post Road.
As long as, as long as it don't come back to us and and because without a sidewalk, it's pushing people into the roadway. And so that's. I I don't recall them saying that, but when I looked at at the location and then I reviewed and I just reviewed the map now, it was September was the first time that they they talked to us. It pushes people into the roadway and that's i- i- if kids, because there's no school buses around here. If kids are walking to school, it's a little bit of a well, the eight hundred block or whatever this is, they could raise that that issue. Where we're pushing kids into the street because we didn't put a sidewalk in. That's my only concern. Other than that, it's it's, I agree.
We were kind of doing that all over the village.
Okay, actually, people are walking more now, taking more bikes and and there there are many places that don't have sidewalks and it's become, it's become a hazard.
Yeah, it's tough.
Glad we have twenty five and we we need to enforce and some people just disregard that, they're flying through people jogging and anyway.
I agree, so.
Alright, so Jerry, you have your answer for the time.
Okay, thanks.
Regretfully, regretfully.
Yeah, okay, let's move, please. One M, field receiving and maintenance program. Carried over from May tenth work session on to regular meeting. Jerry?
Uh, hold on one second, Mayor. Let me get myself organized. Which one do you want? Field?
You're field, one M.
One M.
The receipting.
Uh, earlier today, trustee Natchez had had a a question. I answered that. I think I copied everybody. Including the parks department, but this request for a tractor has been in the capital plan. It is, uh, I can get it on my big list, but I don't want to keep flaunting my big list. So, so the tractor has been on the capital request when we created our capital plan, when Barry created the capital plan. A couple of years ago now. And so that's, that's the the larger item, the second item. And really, the third item, which is the 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 core aerator and the spreader. Are are really being presented to you because of the change of staff that we've had. We have a staff now that's much more willing to do projects in-house. They're much more willing to be trained by me. And much more willing to do work where we can eliminate an outside contractor from doing it and bringing that and moving that in-house. We do, if you're read through my email and looked at the spreadsheet, we do subsidize the use of the fields from baseball and soccer and you know, if you can't increase fees, then you have to figure out a way to reduce your costs. And this is the way to reduce your cost so that we can get to maybe closer to a break even point. But there is in the past, since two thousand sixteen, we spent a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars on the maintenance of the fields with just this one company that comes in, does the field conditioning, which is a correlation. And then does the the fertilizer with the equipment ourselves and with myself training the staff. All we have to do is purchase the organic fertilizer and the seed and we're doing it on our own for a much, much reduced cost. In addition to that, I keep focusing on the tractor. The tractor we currently have that that operates our beach machine is twenty years old. And this tractor will not only be utilized for the conditioning of the fields and the equipment that that we're purchasing in this item, but also as a new tractor for a beach conditioning machine. Put tag along that we have. So and we would keep the old tractor. We wouldn't get rid of the track. We would keep the old tractor, even though it's twenty years old. To create redundancy, because right now our problem and our fear is that if the tractor goes down, we will not be able to clean the beach and I don't know if cleaning the beach by hand is viable. It's not. And then we'd have to keep the beach closed. And so that's probably a little bit of an issue, especially in the hot summer days. So this tractor would help us eliminate that fear, eliminate that concern. We'd also be able to expand our turf conditioning to any other parks. Right now, we don't have that in any of the parks. We don't have the ability to efficiently apply organic fertilizer to certain areas. As everyone knows, they do use the field, the open area at Columbus Park for pickup games. The field in the middle of Florence Park is also used for pickup games. And so when you have use, you have the need for reconditioning. And so correlation eliminates the compaction, overseeding, and then fertilizing, strengthens the turf. Which makes it safer to play on and makes it longer lasting. And so we get rid of the the thirty six thousand dollar annual fee for the conditioning, not the conditioning, but the cultural improvements on the field and and be able to expand everything. The other parks and other areas. But that's why this is such an important item. But admittedly, the twenty nine thousand for the core reader and the twenty three hundred dollar, twenty four hundred dollar item for the spreader never made it to the capital plan. Because we just didn't have the staff at the time to be able to execute that.
Okay, questions, concerns?
You know, Jerry knows and the rest of the board, if they read the emails, knows that this, you know, to me, this is a a priority because it pays for itself in the relative short term and it saves us money in the long term. I mean, aside from the benefits of being able to condition other parks and such, I I just think it, it's one of these things that makes financial sense for the village. It's just good, good planning and a good use of money. This this purchase, this purchase, we removed the thirty six thousand dollar budgeted item in our budget, our current budget right now. So we don't have that in the budget. So we're already saving, even before ordering the equipment. We're already saving thirty six thousand dollars. With, of course, with the need to purchase the equipment to do that work.
Mr. Natchez?
Jerry, I thank you for sending the email, but I, there were two questions that I asked that I did not see the answers to.
Sure.
One was whether or not there would, there needs to be a specialized person to operate on the machine. Say again?
Everyone operates the current tractor right now.
Okay, so you don't need a special specialized training to do that?
No, you do need specialized training to learn how to calibrate the spreader and apply fertilizer, which I can provide.
Okay, but that's, that's a one-time education as opposed to a skill thing, if you will. Okay, and the second is, this is, um, I I'm confused in whether or not staff has the time to do this and whether we need more staff to accomplish this, that.
So the way I look at things, Dan, is that I'd rather have our staff working forty hours a week than only working thirty hours a week. And with this occasional item, which is really only a couple of days in the spring, a couple of days in the fall in in at Harbor Island Park, we could easily fit this in with the current staff.
Okay, would that eliminate the overtime that you're, that you show on the spreadsheet or that you sent in the email?
Now, the the overtime there is for special requests of those organizations pulling us in to do field conditioning at different times. Non, non-working hour times.
Do we charge extra for that or do we just do it?
We charge a use fee. We charge a use fee. And we just do it.
It it's basically the sports teams, sports leagues.
But there's a difference between ongoing rooming and then special requests. Are extra.
We, we do charge them when we come in for overtime. We do charge them for that. Is that what you're saying? It's not included in their fee.
Okay, that's what I was, so, overtime, we're getting, we're getting reimbursed for that overtime. Is that what you're telling me?
Typically, when they call us in to do that work, yes. What they'll do is, let me, let me give you the scenario. The the for rain, they'll cancel Thursdays and Fridays games and then all of a sudden they have games that they weren't scheduled on Saturday or Sunday. All of a sudden now they schedule them Saturday and Sunday. So when they call us in, we charge them that extra. We normally wouldn't be working Saturday and Sunday, but now they've scheduled games to make up for the games that they lost during the week. So we come in and we charge them that.
Okay, so do we have any overtime that is quote not reimbursable overtime? In in the spreadsheet, you get hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars expenses.
No, all the overtime related to the two athletic baseball and soccer is reimbursable overtime. Other overtime, including the o- other items throughout the park is on us.
Okay. Thank you.
This is on for a regular work session. Everybody fine with that?
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Jerry, thank you to yourself. Thank you to staff.
Thank you.
The next up is on for a regular meeting, proposed local law to amend chapter one eighty six flood damage convention as relates to approved letters of map revision. So these are, I think there are three residents who had their lomar changed. And this is recognizing the change that FEMA provided to their lomar. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's just.
Sonoff is answering. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, we we have to, in order for us to maintain our membership in good standing with the NFIP National Flood Insurance Program. We have to reflect the the adoption of the lohmers into our local code.
Okay.
So there there are many, there are many people who have got lohmers that have never been adopted to the village. It's the, the village has never asked for them or or notified them that they need to, even though the village was notified when the lohmers were granted.
According to FEMA, these are the outstanding three lohmers out there. So I'm not, I'm not aware of any other letter of map provisions that have been approved at the federal level. And not approved at the, not recognized by local.
Yeah, Dan, if you know of any of those people, tell them to get their information to us and we'll make the change.
Okay, shall do.
Anybody have any other problems with this, concerns?
We are obligated to approve these.
Right.
Insurance. So it not approving these only prevents us from being in the flood insurance program. It doesn't actually change anything.
We don't make this decision.
Right, right. I that's, I mean, that's the point I was trying to make.
I cut right through that for you, Nora.
Thank you.
Kelly, did you want to say something?
I just want to say, yes, this sounds like obviously it needs to be on the regular agenda. We need to do it.
Okay. The next up is two C Hillside Avenue Bridge Replacement Supplemental Agreement to reallocate project funding on for regular meeting. Mr. Sonoff, is this your ballywick?
Yes, it is. So during the design process, there were additional costs for the engineering and design work and then also the property acquisitions that we had to undertake and are still working on. The, this isn't changing the overall grant from the state under the Bridge New York program. It's reallocating funds within the various categories of the grant we're receiving. So it's transferring money from, or transferring funds from, let me get my memo up. We're increased with the engineering design is being increased from two hundred and five thousand to two forty six. The right of way acquisition from ten thousand to fifty four thousand. The acquisition overage is on our dime and hour being the counter of American Village of Amerenek Town of Rye and the construction allocation went from two million seven eighty five to two million seven hundred thousand. You know, these are numbers on a page, as you know, we do have an additional one million dollar grant from Westchester County. And the overage right now stands for the total project, including the bid a bid award that was recently made is nine hundred seventy eight thousand, which is split equally between the again, the town of Amerenek, town of Ryan.
I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't hear what the last figures were.
The nine hundred seventy eight thousand?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's based on all the costs incurred to date and the the bid award, the total project cost. Let's call it soup to nuts is four million eight hundred twenty eight thousand. We have three million eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in grant funding between the two grants. And the remaining balance of nine seventy eight is split equally among the three municipalities. So it's not changing anything with the project. It's just relocating funds within the grant.
So this would cost us three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars?
Why, really? The the bridge itself, right now it's three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars that each municipality is had to, is gonna have to spend to replace the five million dollar bridge.
So, okay. Okay, well, if you don't spend the three hundred twenty six, we don't get the five million dollar bridge. And it is a bridge that lies completely within the village of America.
Yep, but thankfully, it's, uh, the cost is split evenly among three municipalities. Yep, but thankfully, it's, uh, the cost is split evenly among three municipalities.
Yep.
Um, so I'm just curious as to how much we're committing from, or if any, from the reserve fund now before we get reimbursed.
The, I think the, the agreement that we have with the state of New York is that the village is responsible in the first part to make all payments associated with the project. In terms, I think the way the resolution was written, I think it's the standard funded through capital reserve or funded through fund balance or futuitions of debt. In terms of the, the funding, I think, and maybe Augie can, that's what Augie in the spot, and maybe he can speak a little more accurately about the, the way for the capital program. You know, those, when we pay a capital bill before, when we pay a bill for a capital project, Augie, before we do a, how does it work before we do the final transfer or issue the debt? How do you, how do you get your cash flow? Is that, is that the question you're asking, Nora?
Yeah, I just want, I mean, I just, I mean, you know, I know there was a very tight timeframe. Is there any chance we won't get reimbursed? Is there any chance we'd be on the hook for all of it? And at what point are we reimbursed? I hadn't, I didn't realize that we were laying out the money for this and now it's even more money.
Well, it, it, that's the way most grant programs work is that, you know, usually the municipality puts them, puts out the money first and then they get reimbursed. There are some grant programs where you will receive the grant funding upfront, but that's very, those are very rare and I've never seen a, a bridge project get funded like that. It's usually the municipality putting the money out first and then getting reimbursed.
But we've met all, we've met all the tight timeframes and so we will be reimbursed?
Oh, yeah, well, it was the, the, the only time, the reasons we've asked and received extensions has not been issues with the village, it's been issues with the state of New York. Yeah, requesting additional information, you know, changing certain rules and regulations. And I, I, that's very common for these types of locally administered federal aid projects. But, uh, yeah, we, we've met every timeframe that we've needed to meet. That was within our control. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it like that.
Thank you.
Dan, in my understanding, that the village pays 100% of it and then collects from the other two municipalities in the state and the county?
Yes. Yeah, what, what, what we'll do is yeah, what, what we'll do, and this is how we typically, how we worked with, you know, Jefferson Avenue Bridge was, we paid the bill, we sent the, we sent an invoice to the Town of Rye and they reimbursed us. I mean, there, there's a stipulation that we have among all of us that they're required to, you know, pay us. And I think the, that same stipulation also identifies the Village of Amerenac as the lead agency for implementing the project, so.
Does this stipulation give a timeframe where they have to reimburse us?
It does not, but I, 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 I know the, uh, the Town of Rye, I spoke with the town administrator, Ms. Reisner, I believe they've, uh, they're identifying 326,000 dollars for this project as part of the contract. And I, I think the Town of Amerenac is doing the same. But, uh, we, we will pay upfront and then they reimburse us. It would be administratively difficult to try and ha, try and pay our vendor in a timely fashion if we had to, at the same time, wait to get paid from the Town of Rye and the Town of Amerenac in advance of.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Good explanation. Again, Mr. Sonoff, that, that, when you speak in the future, just try and speak louder because you're hard to hear.
Yeah, I think it's something wrong with my microphone. I apologize.
Yeah, no, but, you know, just, we, we all have technical difficulties. Thank you for that. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns with that being on the agenda for tonight?
I have questions first, and I do have problems with going to the agenda for today.
Go ahead.
I do have questions and I have, and I am not okay putting it on the agenda until those things are resolved.
What are the questions?
Because the, the, well, first, I understand Dan's, your explanation about the difference on the 300,000, whatever, which actually doesn't come up in any, any of the warehouses or the results of the resolution. So I perfectly follow you, you and I, you know, we've been working so much in this. I have a stack of paper like this big on Hillside Avenue, secret that I've been following, working with you very closely. Now, I, I don't follow, I, I follow the explanation. I don't understand the resolution. Because I don't, that you, what you explained a few minutes ago is not in the resolution. So if, if that's what we need to do, let's have a new, a new draft of solution and, 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 and approve that difference. So explain what's going on and we can, and we approve the changes. That, that will be it.
Yeah, I, I have no problem, but the, the resolution that is presented to the board is based on the sample resolution that the DOT sent. So I use their language in the resolution for the board.
We, this board approved the, this project in 2017. 17, that's when it was approved. That's when, when we put that language that it'll be approved, this or that. That's why are we doing this all over again and with different language? The way, it has nine resolves and I'm very uncomfortable with, very unopen-ended, very unclear what is happening in those resolves.
Okay, I mean, I, I can look at the resolution, understand that this is the, the DOT's resolution. It's there. If they're the, the grant funder in this instance, so I think.
We already did that three years ago. Why are we doing it again?
Because this is the, I, I don't want to sound repetitive, but this is the draft resolution that they've asked us to adopt. This is what was presented to us as, along with the, the supplemental agreement. So that, that's why I, I prepared the resolution in such a fashion as to mirror the draft resolution that the DOT sent to us for board consideration.
And then just, it mentions nothing about reimbursement. It just says that we're passing, we're, we're, it doesn't even mention that it could be capital project or funded one way or the other. It just says straight out, we're going to do it, we're taking those $3 million out of our capital fund balance. And then it just goes authorizing the staff to cover all additional costs without even says any, any additional responsible cost, meaning any, any is any, so anything. And then, uh, and it continues. In the, in the event the project does not cover, then we, we're, we're committing ourselves to anything that comes out, out of this project. And we are kind of reauthorizing this project. So I, I'm very, we went to, we were ready to do this. I, I really don't understand why it's not clear. It doesn't reflect very, it really doesn't follow any of the, of the parameters of this, of this project that we just discussed today that is essentially a grant that will be reimbursed. It does, it's not reflected here. It's as if we were just taking money from our capital fund balance and building a bridge and authorizing staff. Any additional costs will cover.
So I, I can talk to the DOT to see, I, I think they would probably be okay with revisions to the warehouse clauses. The resolve clauses, they might have, it might be a bit more strident about as need to be included.
Then, my first question is, is this, was, this project was approved two years ago. Why do we have to approve it again?
What, what we're approving is, or we're being asked to approve is a reallocation of costs within, within the grand project.
Then we'll approve that change. In fact, no problem approving that, but not reauthorizing this with that all open-ended language.
Right, again, I, I can, if there's discomfort with the resolution, I can talk to the state to see what type of flexibility we have. I, I believe they would probably be amenable to flexibility in the warehouse clauses of the resolution that they'll need for this, but they, I think they may want, uh, the, they may have, they may not want us to change the resolve clauses.
Then, let me, I, I understand the bind you're in. You're dealing with a state agency, federal fund, yes. But if you look at those nine resolves, which is our way of doing business, it is an instruction that goes way beyond what we're doing. That's my concern. Because this is how we do our work. This is, this is us giving you instructions. So they, we can be dictated by other policies, yes, but that doesn't mean I have to just sign. It has to be in line with how we, how we do business and actually what it, what it says. So, so please, I, I understand your bind, but also look at this language and those nine resolves. The lengthiest, one of the lengthiest resolutions we've had is, it's a way, very, very wide. Very, very concerning. So I don't know if others share that, but I, I have a problem with it.
Nora, Dan?
I mean.
I think Victor Frigging, a very good point.
Nora?
Yeah, I mean, this is my, I, I don't, I, I think we need to nail down the changes. I'm looking at the resolution from 2017. And that's when we approved it. We're not approving it now. It's, it's an ongoing project. So I think maybe we need to make sure that we're documenting what we're actually agreeing to tonight and nothing more.
Okay, let me suggest, Mr. Sonoff, when, when you, when you talk to the Department of Transportation, maybe Bob could be on to call to help, you know, get through some of the legalese of it. Bob, are you okay with that?
I'm there.
Yeah, I think the concern is that this new resolution, which I understand that the state needs it, but it not, you know, confer additional obligations on the village than those that the village accepted in the 2017.
Yeah.
Or, you know, passage, right? I mean, the shifting of funds is one thing and, and just cleaning up some language is one thing, but you know, we're really not looking to redo this whole project, reauthorize it.
Okay. You guys at least have your instructions?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so that will, that won't be on for tonight. We'll hold that. I am Mayor Westers County, Community Development Block Grant Funding for Waverly Avenue, Prospect Avenue, infrastructure improvements on for a regular meeting. This is a community development block grant that we won in 2019. Now comes the time we applied for it and now they're asking us to enter into agreement with them to pay our 50% of the cost. In some substance, Dan, that's what it is, right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you, buddy. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, I don't see any. Let's just put it off for a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And thank God we're getting community development block grant funding again. It's been a source of many improvements in the Village of Amerenac. And Waverly Avenue can definitely use this. And so could Prospect East. Sprayground Days of Operations, time sensitive because, well, you know, it's summer. Jerry, I know you got calls. I got calls to people perturbed on social media about the lack of spray time for children outside of camp during the summer. So, take it from there, Jerry?
Thanks, Mayor. So I think that the calls are minimal compared to when the kids start to come out of school or when school ends because more parents and grandparents will be utilizing the beach and the spray ground and the park when kids are out of school. And so, um, obviously we see that things are turning around. It looks like that our tax payments are higher than, our sales tax payments are going to be higher than we anticipated. So I'm asking the board's consideration to take $20,000 out of contingency and provide the seven-day-a-week operation up until Labor Day for the spray ground, which will of course have a higher water bill, but will make the kids a lot happier as well as the parents and the grandparents. But really, it's about the kids. I don't really, you know, not to worry about the parents or grandparents.
So we're basically going back to our pre-pandemic funding.
That's correct.
Because we're assuming we're going to have a sort of pre-pandemic summer.
We're going to have a busy summer.
Yeah.
And I think that we're going to have a good revenue year because of how things are turning around so quickly.
Um, you know, I mean, I, you know, I think maybe we, you know, in April, we weren't so optimistic about using the spray ground and maybe we underestimated and trying to keep the budget really tight. But again, this is like the third thing tonight that we're going into our reserve fund for. So I just, we have to really be mindful of, of how we're doing this. And I think, um, you know, if we know that we're going to send, you know, we may end up selling more beach passes as we did last year, like we may, you know, have revenues from the beach for this. And I think we should, you know, I, I go for it, but I want to, I want us to sort of keep evaluating the budget and where we are.
Just, just to clarify, it's not from the reserve fund. It's from the contingent account.
Contingent account, okay. You're right, okay.
So Jerry, you're looking for this additional $20,000 to pay for the spray ground seven days a week between now and June 20th, or is this for the whole summer additional $20,000?
Additional $20,000 for the whole summer until Labor Day.
Okay, so the running of the, and so when would this start? Tomorrow?
Yeah, we'd start it right away. As, as soon as the, as soon as the approval of money in the contingency, the, the, the money's already in the budget. The contingency account is already included in the, but we're not going into fund balance. We're going, we're just taking it out of contingency and, in circumstance that, you know, came up.
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, I think it makes more sense to run the spray ground seven days a week, starting when school is out. I mean, I just, I would like the public to be educated on how expensive the spray ground is because we can't recirculate the water. It's just water flowing constantly. Once we turn, you know, when it's on, it's on. It's not recirculating. And I mean, this is a longer-term proposal, but I, I would hope we would look to moving the spray ground in some way so that we could put some recirculation on it. But the spray ground is really expensive and I'd like to find a way that it could be less expensive, long-term, big project in the future.
You know, there's been talk about expanding the spray ground in the future.
Is there a way we could do that? Sorry, you're done, Mayor? Is there a way along those lines of Kelly's request to, to have a split, split the cost or manage the cost because, because of, I, I, I under, I understand, you know, when it gets hot that, that it's ideal, but would, would it maybe some time, not just the entire day? I, I just can't find the memo again. I remember reading it, but, but what are the times and could, 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 could this be controlled a little more so that we make sure it doesn't go beyond that? And that it's really used when it has to be used. So I'm in favor of expanding it, but not just an open-ended seven days a week, like, you know, back to normal, because things are really not back to normal. We, you know, maybe the revenues are here and there, but, but, but things are, are subjects to many, to many, to many.
Well, can I just point out that when, when, when people aren't there, like if you have a cloudy day or if you, the spray gun is people activated.
Yeah.
So, so it's not running all the time.
Okay.
It, it's not like in New York City where you see the, the, the spray conditions, like when I was growing up, they had a, they had two seals in the park that sprayed water. Or you probably know what I'm talking about, growing up in the city. And it was on all the time. To activate the spray ground, a kid has to go in, he's got to hit this kind of globe inside there. So it's not running constantly. So if, if there's nobody there, it's not going to be on. And, but, you know, there's nothing worse for a kid to go down to the beach, especially, you know, if you've ever been down there at low tide, you know, there's absolutely no opportunity to swim at low tide. And to see this spray thing and, you know, people tell you, well, you got to wait an hour and a half to go. You know what I mean? I mean.
I understand. My question, thank you. I appreciate the, the explanation, Mayor. As I said, I, 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 I would like to expand this. I just want to see how we can use this in a more reasonable way so that it's not just an open back to where we were before. Because let, let's try to conserve when we can or just educate, rationalize so that we not just go back to where we were, but, but make, make, make some progress on how we can manage it better or move into something.
Normal hours, 10 to 5. And, uh, when we have camp, it'll be 9 to 2:45. So I can designate normal hours to be 10 to 4 and that may save a little bit of money, seven days a week. That's, you know, that's, that's significant.
Unless when it's getting hot. Okay, something along those lines, I think.
We could start it a little bit later, 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock in the morning and, and then go to 5. I mean, whatever. We can adjust. If you want me to talk to Jason about shaving an hour off of the time used, that'll save us, that'll save us a little bit of. We can adjust. If you want me to talk to Jason about shaving an hour off of the time used, that'll save us, that'll save us a little bit of money. You know, the transfer is the transfer, whatever we don't use, obviously, it's a bill. It's a, it's a, it's a water bill. So whatever we don't, we don't pay for.
What are we talking about here? You're going to be saving $2,000 or $3,000. Come on.
Yeah, that's what you save. You're right.
But then it's not just that. It's just that we, let's say, for example, from 9 to 10, maybe not use. That's why I'm trying to just have this kind of conversation. I think Jerry picked it up. Jerry picked it up, but maybe, maybe it's a good idea just to start at 10 because at 9, maybe not, that's not. So let's hear from, as you say, Mayor, let's hear from those who are closer to the service and see if maybe they can, because it's just a rational use. It's not just money here or there. It's taxpayers' money and it's, and it's it's us to conserve when we, where we can't, but just to turn on the tap because it's only $2,000. That's my point.
As I pointed out before, it's not just turning on the tap. It's activated by people.
So Jerry, I like, I like your recommendation. If other trustees agree, then have that conversation. Save an hour if you want. You have the authority on the other side.
I just, as long as you approve the content, the, the the transfer out of, out of contingency to the water account, I have no problem. We'll regulate. We'll regulate. We know what you're looking for. We know what you're looking for.
Thank you. The Girl Scout in me is saying use resources wisely.
Yeah, especially water.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. I appreciate this. And you know, when this water is turned on, you know, seven days a week before school is out, we're, we're one of the only, if not the only place in the county that has water available for recreation. I mean, the county stuff does not open until June 20th or later. So.
Well, why don't we do that? Why don't we just wait to June 20th to do it? And that'll save you money.
Jerry.
That works.
And that would be only to do it seven days a week, starting on June 20th. The weekends, we would do, you know, starting now, of course. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dan. Go ahead.
My, my question, Jerry, is the original budget of 20,000 is, was based on last year, half of last year's expense. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
I think half of last year's budgeted amount, which was 40,000, two years ago.
Last year's was 40,000. And so we cut it in half to 20,000.
I think that's correct.
Okay, but we've increased, and so we're going back to roughly 40,000. Increase the water rates 38%. But we have. Say again?
I should be asking for more.
There's a $12,000 deficit.
So let me try to adjust the hours as trustee before mentioned and still keep the kids happy. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, but.
Magical formula to everything, Jerry.
So. But this discussion, you know, in the previous discussions tonight and allocating, you know, for different projects goes back to what the information that I had suggests that we have in front of us can track what we've done, what the balances are and what the impacts are going to be. You know, on the, on next year's budget, because all of this has to take, take a much more holistic view in terms of managing where we're going in terms of the budgets. Regardless which pocket we take it out of, it all, it all affects the totals. And that's what we need to have.
I'm still. How do I forecast water used at a spray ground prior, other than to give you an estimate when there could be 21 days of rain and we don't run the spray ground? I don't understand that part. Like, what are you looking for?
No, 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 you, you asked for $20,000. We increased the water rate. So we have to adjust the amount that I think that we are, that you need in order to meet the expectations that we're trying to do. But if we take, you know, that 20, you know, that 20,000 or 32,000 out of an account, you know, and we've done that with other things out of accounts that we have a running total of what the accounts were at the beginning of, you know, for the budget. You know, and, you know, what the adjustments are for by line item. We don't, we, we're not asking you to be clear of what, 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 you know, how many days is going to rain and whatever. That's, that's not the, that's not the issue at all.
Augie gave you, Augie gave you the running total on June 11 at 9:46 AM. He gave you the running total of the general fund budgetary accounts, the items that were in addition to the budget.
Sure.
Is that the list that you're looking for? It looks like this.
Yeah, I understand what the list is. What I'm looking for is each time there's a request that on one page, we have a summary that shows us what the cause, the cause and effect is. Have to keep going from one, you know, one report to another report to another report.
But this is a two-page report of all the items that were added to the budget or, or revenue was included, revenue was added or appropriations. This is a two-page report that provides that. The resolution like we have in the packet typically provides you the information that you're looking for unless we need.
Actually, Jerry, I don't think it does because what happens is and yes, there, it's in a lot of the different pieces of paper that we can, you know, everybody can individually try and put together. That's not, not the point. We, we passed a budget for, you know, that starts in two weeks. Okay, we had, we were under the cap by about $107,000.
It started two weeks ago.
Started two weeks ago.
It was two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, it started two weeks ago. Forgive me. I spoke. I apologize. Thank you for correcting me. Since then, before, before that, you know, we were, we reduced certain revenues. We added certain expenses. You know, we would, we would have been way over the cap, you know, based upon that. It's a question of not saying what we're doing is wrong. Absolutely not the issue. The issue is so we all understand what the real implications and cause and effect are. And that, and that's how, you know, most corporations run. You know, it, you know, so that we, we understand the implications of what we're doing, not that something's wrong with doing it.
Okay.
Not that the proposal, it doesn't have merit.
So how does?
For any type.
All right, all right. We, we passed our time. We beat this dead horse. We've given Jerry his, his information. I need a motion to end this meeting, take a break, and we'll come back for a regular meeting.
So moved.
All set. All in favor?
Aye.
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 See you in a little while.
Nora, okay. All righty folks, gonna start in 30 seconds. Yes. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 14th, 2021 Board of Trustees regular work session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a presentation is the first item on the agenda, and the presentation is from our friends at the Westchester Joint Water Works. And tonight, we have Paul Cutsie, who is the Director of the Westchester Joint Water Works, and we have Mr. David Berzold, who is the Treasurer of the Westchester Joint Water Works. Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight, and they're here tonight to talk about the proposed changes to the water rates. Who wants to begin today's presentation?
Mayor, I'll, I'll begin the presentation. Again, I'm David Berzold, Business Director of the Westchester Joint Water Works, and thank you for allowing us to present some background information on the water rates of the Water Works. And we're going to talk a little bit about capital projects as well. I'm going to share my screen, and hopefully we'll be successful on that. All right, can everyone see my screen?
No.
No, not yet. It's busy.
It says David Burns all started sharing screen, but there's no information.
Okay, it indicates that I'm on my end, it indicates that the screen is shared.
Or use a certain orange.
All right, let me try it again. Can you see it now?
Nope.
David, do an email to me and I'll pause the run it for you.
I have it open, let me put it up.
Okay.
But you have to, you have to, you have to close, yeah, you have to stop sharing out David.
Okay.
Okay, let me get it trying.
Oh, thanks Victor.
Are you ready? Just give me the orders.
I'm ready. Thank you, thank you again for this opportunity. Sorry about the technical issue, I'm not quite sure I understand that since before. Going to the first slide, let's start off by talking a little bit about the cost of water from the Westchester Joint Water Works. The average retail cost per gallon of finished water, that's water purchased from the New York City Water System and then treated and distributed by the Westchester Joint Water Works, is nine tenths of one cent per gallon. So I think if you compare that cost of bottled water or most, or any other type beverage or that we use, that actually is pretty inexpensive in general. We can move to the next slide, talking a little more about the cost of water. Take a look at the, what drives the cost of water. First of all, we purchase water from the New York City Water System, which I mentioned before. Looking at our approximately $25 million base of expense and looking at the current water rates from New York City, our expense base is made up of about $11.5 million, which relates to purchased water from the New York City Water System. In addition to that, we have thirteen and a half million dollars in costs related to the operation of the water system, so that includes water treatment, water distribution, general overhead, maintenance and repairs of water mains and water storage tanks, water treatment plants, et cetera. And then the third cost driver, our costs associated with water system capital improvements. And we've talked about the five-year plan previously, and we talked more specifically about the joint system projects. In this figure that I'm showing here, 143 million, we've incorporated over a five-year period what the local system costs would be related to the capital plan as well. So if you can move on to the next slide, we can take.
David, would you entertain a quick question? The first two, for the first two bullets, those are annual, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that is basically the annual operating cost, again, is about $25 million in total. The five-year capital improvement plan, we went, we've previously gone through some detail with you on the joint system planned projects, which were around 124 to 125 million dollars. The village of Mamaroneck's share of that cost is approximately $34 million, it's about, it's roughly about 28% of the total. And that's, that's based on the village's share of water purchases, gallons purchased relative to the other two members of the Westchester Joint Water Works, Towne Harrison and the town of Mamaroneck. So the, the single largest project in those planned joint projects is the filtration plan at $108 million. And the village of Mamaroneck share of that is roughly 30 million. Now again, these costs are spread over a five-year period. This isn't all occurring in one year. You will notice, you know, we have multiple other projects related to UV treatment, the UV treatment facility at Rye Lake, our water storage tanks, pump station modifications, transmission system upgrades, chlorination system upgrades. And then we also have a line for grants and cost sharing. On the UV treatment facility project, the Westchester Joint Water Works received a $3.2 million grant from New York State related to that, so that gross cost of eight million that you see for the UV facility actually gets netted down by 3.2 million. And there's, there's some additional costs included in there for cost sharing with the county on some projects that benefit them as well. Now below, below the line of the joint system planned projects, we have joint system emergency contingency projects. So we've been a bit conservative on that number, but we can have between one and two million dollars of emergency projects that arise that have to be addressed that affect the joint system. With respect to the local distribution systems, or in this case specifically for the village of Mamaroneck, the most significant cost we have on local projects relate to transite water main replacements, and we've included a figure of about a million and a half dollars per year. And that's again, a local distribution system cost, so it's 100% cost of the village of Mamaroneck. And then we also have included $250,000 a year related to pre-paving infrastructure replacement. So where we have, we may have some, run across an occasional lead service connection or faulty valves or something that would require a fairly quick repair or be vulnerable to any planned paving within the municipality by either the municipality itself or the county. We, we again include costs to cover those repairs, so that we do them before the streets are paved and we're not digging up a nice newly paved street. So if you aggregate all of those, the five-year capital plan includes about $143 million in gross projects and the, the village of Mamaroneck share of those are about 45.
I just would be, before you go change slides, I just want to point out, it's a five-year capital plan, but those projects, and this is partially to our staff too. Correct me if I'm wrong, those projects aren't capitalized on a five-year basis, they capitalized on a 20 or 30-year basis.
That, that's correct, right. They, depending on the type of project, it would be amortized probably anywhere from 15 years to 25 years, obviously.
Okay, so I didn't want people to think that that was on the hope to taxpayers in the next five years. Okay.
Right, no, this is, is just the, the spend over the next five years.
Thank you.
All right, moving to the next slide, look a little bit at water rate history. Now I mentioned, we purchased water from New York City, and you'll see the, there's a column for New York City DEP, which is Department of Environmental Protection. And we purchased water from that, from their system, and you can see over the last 15 years, the average rate increase from New York City has been approximately 7.9%. During that time, the village of Mamaroneck's average rate increase has been approximately 9.3%. In 2021, this year, effective July 1st, New York City will be increasing their rate by 9%. Now, we haven't increased rates in a couple of years. And in that interim period, New York, New York City also did not increase rates other than one year where they had a 9.2% increase two years ago. So the rate that we're proposing, again, to be, in this case, also effective July 1, 2021, would be a 9.5% water rate increase for the village of Mamaroneck. And if you look at what I'm going to call a quote-unquote average user of the system, an average household, they use about 100,000 gallons of water a year. Currently, that annual bill is approximately $796. With the 9.5% increase, that will increase to $872, to $76,000 a year, per year increase, which amounts to about 21 cents per day.
Does that increase anticipate increased costs for the capital projects?
This, this takes into consideration the, the timing of capital projects as we move forward. And also retrospectively at what our results were in prior years. So 2020 was a bottom line, at least in terms of distributions in municipalities, was a little bit better than it typically has been, so that allows us to, in this case, even with some zeros in a couple of years on rate increases, to go with a 9.5% increase, which should cover us going forward, at least for the next year, for this year. You know, we will obviously be entertaining other rate increases in the future, you know, based on the progression of the capital plan.
2020 was a wet year, excuse me, a dry year, I have it backwards. 2020 was a dry year. So we, the water usage was up. Is that correct, David?
So that's right, and COVID-19 had, had an impact too on the cost side. Our costs were lower than they might otherwise have been because projects were deferred.
Right. And as to answer the questions, yes, it factors in the. And as to answer the questions, yes, it factors in the capital projects in terms of the stage of, of, of progress that they're in at this point.
So for instance, the largest capital project in there, the water filtration plant. We expect to have, we've incurred about two million dollars today related to the engineering design and other consultant costs. And we expect within the year to incur another approximately four million dollars related to detailed design, et cetera. So that, that's been factored into.
David, could you speak up a little bit more so we can hear you better?
Sure, I'm sorry. Basically, what, what I was saying is we've, we're, we've spent approximately two million dollars today, or a little more than that on costs associated with the largest capital project, the water filtration plant. And we anticipate on that one, which again, would be the largest cost over the five years, that we'll spend another four million dollars for the balance of the year, related to detailed engineering design, et cetera. So, so we factored all of those things, the UV plant, et cetera, into the rate proposal.
And as the, as the cost, it's a hundred and eighty-million-dollar project. This also will this number, this rate, and David, please help me here. Also takes into consideration the, the higher expenses that are going to be coming in the years to come with the filtration plant, so that we won't have to increase rates proportionately with the, with the, with the proportional increase in spending on the filtration plant. The idea is, is to keep the rate increases uniform as much as possible over a period of time.
So you're, does that mean that you're anticipating over the next five years, a ten percent increase every year for five years?
There'll, there'll be a rate increase somewhere in that, in that neighborhood. We, in all the municipalities, over the past years, we've tried to set rates so that we built fund balance within the water funds, which can potentially be used to mitigate and spread out. But yes, yeah, it will be significant rate increases over the next five years.
On that, on that mark, could you give us some projections and you can send them to us separately following this presentation? I think it's been clear as to where, how we get to this, to this rate increase now. How would it, this, this issue of how it continues and how it affects the overall budget? You know, when I, when I joined the board a few, several years ago, way back, there was a particular trustee, and you know, you probably remember, who was, that would ask for this year after year. And would look at the crunch numbers a lot. So I'm not going to go through that exercise, but, but, but it will be, it, it was useful. I learned a little bit from that. And, and getting those, those projections and, 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 and the actual numbers. You've done a little bit of this also in the past, after this particular trustee is, is now joining us, that you did share, share some of those details. The mayor also helped sending us. So, so can you give us a little bit? So it's twofold. On the one hand, kind of, what is the operation in the coming year? How is that this number? And you have, you have info. I'm not asking anything that you don't have. And also some of the projections so that we, we can see what, what, how, how this fits into that or five-year long-term.
Yes, we're, as part of the draft EIS for, for the filtration plan in particular, we're we're doing an update of our forecast and looking at the change or what the most current expectations are on the timing of expenditures, et cetera. So we will be doing something overall related to that, an update. And so, yes, we can share.
Is, is that ready at this point, or is it going to be refined?
That's what we're doing. We're refining it at this point, and we also need to go back to the municipalities. We use some assumptions with respect to interest rates and also term of bonds, as well as some other assumptions in there that we need to refine a bit going forward. And also look at the available fund balance in each community.
Right. But there should be, but we can share, I believe, what we have now. With the knowledge that it's going to be obviously refined before we include it in the, in the secret process.
Oh, well, before, before it becomes part of the secret process, we'll be able to do that, yes.
But I'm, I'm saying, are we able to share what we have now, or do, are we going to, or would you feel more comfortable refining it first before we share with the village?
Well, we're, we're in the middle of doing the updates now, so I'd rather, you know, take the little bit more time to do the update and then share that rather than have multiple scenarios floating around.
Got it. Okay, so how long, so what do you, what do you expect in terms of we can will be able to make it available to the, when do you expect we'll be able to make it available to the village?
Probably sometime in early July, I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
David, on the other piece is ready, the, the operations for last last year, you share that, I think last year, the day, the year before you did give us, it's like I know, eight, nine-page summary of
Yes.
Your accounts. That, that is, when it, when that, if that's ready at the same time, fine, if not, let us know. Because it does help us. You know, I know the mayor goes there, sits every month, and for us, it's also help, it helps us to have an overview of, of where you're standing.
Right, yeah, to the extent that I have finalized information available at this point, I'll, I'll provide you with that, or start providing you with that.
Can you, can you, David, can you provide us with that, like, in the next week, so that we could use it for backup at our next water trustee's work session?
Yeah, I can, I can send you a copy of the audited financial statements for twenty-twenty. Is, is that what Mr. Tapper, was that what you were interested in?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any more slides?
No, that's actually the end of the presentation. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Would have any questions, Dan Natchess?
Yeah, a couple of things. For the for the, the major capital expense, like filtration plant, each of the three municipalities issued their own bonds, or how is that financed?
Yes, we, we are not a water authority, so we cannot issue our own debt. So each, yeah, each municipality issues their own bonds for their share of the projects.
So, so help me understand this, for something like that in the trunk lines, who actually owns the plant in the, in the trunk lines? Does the three municipalities own a third of each, or?
It's, it's, there, there are some historical informations on the allocations of those components over the years, and then basically, it's, it's based upon the share of the, again, the water sales on a gallon basis, which it can vary year to year, but they're in, in generally the same range. So it's, it's roughly twenty-eight percent village of Mamaroneck and fifty-four percent for Harrison, and then eighteen percent or so for the town of Mamaroneck. But again, some of those allocations can vary a bit, but that's roughly what it is.
Okay, but I would, okay, but I guess I was, but when, when it's a tri-municipal ownership, I guess my question is who actually owns it legally? Is it a percentage ownership that each own, like a common property, like?
Well, in, basically, the Water Works owns the joint system and each municipality has an ownership interest in that in the financial statements. It's reflected there.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I'm not sure I understood it.
The, the, the allocation of the ownership effectively of the joint system through the Water Works is reflected in the financial statements. I mean, we can have our legal counsel expound on that a little bit as well.
Mr. Spolzino, you, you, you have a lot of experience for writing memos about the Westchester Joint Water Works. Would you have an answer to that question?
Well, I, I think, I think it was Mr. Birdsall that was speaking, right? I think he answered correctly. It's sort of a unique entity in that, as he said, they own the, the joint system. The village owns the, each municipality owns its distribution system. But the village has an obligation to pay its share of the cost of the entire system.
Of the jointly owned system.
Right, and of the, and of the distribution system, the operation of the distribution system.
Not sure I totally understand that, but I, maybe I'll do it a different way. For, for the local projects, for the local lines, is in the village of Mamaroneck, does Westchester Water Works own those, or does the village own those?
West, the village owns the lines. Westchester Joint Water Works does the projects and charges the village for them.
No, I understand, okay, but the, the hardware is owned by the village.
That's correct.
Project, basically.
Depending upon what the hardware is, if the hardware is a line that's caused, let's just say, town of Mamaroneck and the village of Mamaroneck, then that's owned by the Westchester Joint Water Works. If it's a, a main that's going down, let's just say, you know, a street in Oriente, it doesn't supply anything in the town, it doesn't supply anything in Harrison, that's the village of Mamaroneck. If it's like the huge main that got replaced, that went over North Barry Avenue, that was the joint Water Works. So just because it's in the village of Mamaroneck, doesn't necessarily mean it's all pipe. It's about who those pipes are servicing.
Right. And the transmission mains, which are part of the joint system, which you're referring to there, are generally about twelve inches and larger in size. And the dis, local distribution mains are below that. Typically.
Okay, so I understand it. So you have a distribution system, and you operate it, and we pay you to operate it. But we own a third of it, or roughly twenty-eight percent, or whatever, whatever the percentages are.
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
Distribution system we own. The village owns title to the distribution system.
Okay.
Westchester Joint Water Works owns title to the joint system, you know, the what it
Transmission.
Transmission system.
Right, a transmission.
Village has no, oh, percentage ownership interest in that. It has an obligation to pay, but it doesn't own it. The entity, Joint Water Works, owns it.
Okay, so, so if, if we own the local system, is what I'm understanding that, that you're saying, correct?
Correct.
That means that the hydrants would also be owned by us.
I believe that's right, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I think that's right.
So a question I asked a few weeks ago is, I don't understand why we pay rent to you for the hydrants if we own them.
Well, because we have to, we have to maintain the hydrants.
So it's, it's not really a rental of the hydrants, it's, it's a operational cost.
Correct, yeah.
And you also replace them if they're, right, we don't replace hydrants. If someone rolls over a hydrant. Westchester Joint Water Works replaces that and buys that, and the village of Mamaroneck doesn't do that.
Right, so, so is anything involved with maintenance of the hydrants?
And that's been going on since the beginning of the Water Works.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, I'm going to allow Mr. Tippett, I think Mr. Queros probably doesn't have his hand up for this, Mr. Tippett, to ask a question here.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Joint Water Works. On the long-term bonding, could we have an estimate of the useful life of the different products? That way, as we tried to figure out the bonding, we'll know, we'll know how long we can write bonds for different products?
Yes, we do, we do know the useful lives. Some of them, like the water mains, want to go out further in terms of useful life than you could reasonably expect to get a bond term for. But, but yes, yes, we do know the useful lives of the
And that's information that you share with the clerk treasures when we go out to the box.
Correct.
Perfect. And the other question that I have asked is, in, in any year presentation, this doesn't include money the village has already spent on capital project, water projects over the last year that we still need to bond.
If, if the question is, are there some capital projects in that plan that have already been undertaken or near completion? There are some, yes.
Okay, thank you. Glenn, just so you know, when you get on later on, your, your, your sound sounds like, you know, you're the, you're the announcer at Yankee Stadium, you know, when they announce. The next up is Mr. Teager. And, you know, just be aware, everything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law.
Very funny, Mr. Mayor.
No, it's just factual. So please go ahead.
Okay. On the hydrants, I don't have the audit of the bills that the Westchester Joint Water Works does, does every two weeks that you review there. But I do believe that when a hydrant is replaced, and it can cost up to thirty thousand dollars, that's billed to the municipality it's in. So I just hope that, that the statements that were made about the hydrant arrangement are fact. And they'll, they'll be corroborated as so or explained. Thank you.
Okay. See, if Mr. Queros wants to talk about this. Mr. Queros, we, we're talking about the Westchester Joint Water Works, is your?
My, my comment is not about the Water Works.
Okay, then, hold on, Louis, I'll call you first on a, on a
Okay.
I'll call you first.
Okay.
So hang on. Thank you, gentlemen, from the Westchester Joint Water Works. I appreciate your being here. Just want to say, I've been on that board for a number of years now, and you gentlemen are a pleasure to work with.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Like, good night.
Okay, now, next item is a communication to the board. And just before we begin, there was a five-minute limit. At the end of five minutes, I'm going to tell you your time is up, and you can finish the thought and the sentence that you were on. Okay, Mr. Queros. Go ahead, Louis, unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. And when we discuss politics and social issues and economics, framing is everything. And for example, there's a fire escape in front of Holstead Avenue in a building where there's a bar by the train station that says if you're not paying taxes, if you do, and it's on the fire escape, which should be illegal to begin with. If you're not paying taxes, taxes, thank the taxpayer. I, I, I find that revolting at the faces, the community, the communities, the poor communities of the village, of this friendly village, supposedly friendly village, and it faces the community of color. There's not a person in the village of Mamaroneck and it faces the community of color. There's not a person in the Village of Mamaroneck um, that does not pay taxes. But that sign should not be there. It's very insulting and it's really racial and it's been there for well over, been there for long, long, long time, over a year. Uh, and it always amazes me that no one picked up on it. Uh, it doesn't, it really doesn't amaze me because that it is, that's how it is. Now, for six months, I've been discussing and bringing up myself and other people about the litigation and the visibility of litigation. And again, framing is everything. I have no idea uh, why gentleman's agreements and the unethical part of budgets. Uh, budgets, if, if we can't afford anything in the village, it's not because we have lack of funds, it's because we have lack of transparency, the lack of ethics. Uh, as I demonstrated many times in different ways and with that fire escape. Uh, you will never see that fire escape, uh, that notice in front of wealthy areas. Uh, and again, the litigation is missing for some political donors of the Democratic Party or of any party. Uh, um, that should be there. I keep looking at the website. I'm, I keep being told that it's there and it's not there. And, uh, uh, particularly Cindy Goldstein's lawsuit has not been posted. And again, it is the sense of framing, the, the framing of political issues, the way you want to frame an argument. And this will become more evident as time goes on with me on other issues. But I'm a framing expert, literally. I know how to frame issues, uh, as I teach it in graduate school. Um, and I teach police officers, I work with lawyers, that adds for my framing of things and, uh, this is where we cannot afford. This is, this is where people cannot afford living in this village because of the trickery. Uh, so, you know, I'm bringing that forward and, uh, and it's really malice to protect the few, the 15% of the village. But that, that, that lawsuit should be prepped. It should be visible and it should be transparent. And, and I don't know why, with all the people that I'm talking to now, uh, we can't get the framing ethically done. So the answers are transparent. I, I, I don't know if I use my five minutes, but I had to say that. And thank you for not stopping me. It's, it's over five minutes.
Thank you, Louis. Have a good evening.
That's all you have to say?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Yeah, I'm, nobody, you have no comment to what I said? Are you gonna tell me that is, that, that lawsuit is
I don't have a comment. Thank you.
And you, you think that's fair? I'm paying taxes. As a matter of fact, this month I gotta pay taxes again. I, I am one of the taxpayers.
We, we all are. And, and as you rightly pointed out, everybody in the community is a taxpayer. I agree with you on that.
Okay, but, uh, then why can't I get the answer to that question? Why is it Cindy Goldstein's lawsuit listed?
I see it there. I don't know what you don't see. Maybe you could call up tomorrow and have them walk you through it.
No, and I, I, I've walked through it and it's not there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you deal with that other issue too? If we're all taxpayers, that's trying to go off and then it's illegal and they should have been fined a long time ago.
We'll, we'll have the building department look at it. Thank you. Okay, Kevin. Kevin Westchester? Kevin? Are you there, Kevin? I seem to have a technical difficulty with Kevin. Uh, go to Daria.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to ask, um, I know that I asked last meeting when you guys were going back into in-person, um, meetings and you guys said like around fall. Um, and I saw that some other towns and villages, like around Westchester, have gone in. So, um, because the, like, New York law that was mandating that it was, that these meetings were over Zoom, like expired. Um, and I was just wondering why you guys were, um, keeping Zoom meetings and if you had any more, um, accurate estimate for when you'd be back in, in person?
Uh, right now, that's still the estimate, uh, you know, something that we could discuss as a board when we look at how the rules have changed. That's the best answer I have here.
Okay, um, and if you guys, like, since you guys are, um, able to go back whenever you um, want to, when would, like, you want to get back in, in person? I just don't understand why it hasn't happened yet um, for the village, but it has for other places.
Some places have and some places haven't. And I, I think I've told you, you know, we'll look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to Glenn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Is this better?
Yeah, it's much better, Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually wanted to introduce you as batting first, Mayor Tom Murphy.
That would be, you know, one of my fantasies to be playing in Yankee Stadium.
A couple of things. Uh, is there any progress on all-year sports recreational facility involving sports time going on? Uh, a couple of years ago, you were going to, uh, end the contract with sports time. You had a group of residents that came out. You then had a committee about how to, uh, save tennis in the, uh, in the village. They came back with a report that basically said that uh, to be viable, you probably would need more of a complete indoor facility. And I haven't heard anything since. And sports times contract, the time is ticking.
Uh, I believe the ad hoc, uh, committee has been meeting diligently and, uh, they have, uh, been making progress. But I, I understand that it's, it's time sensitive and I believe they do too.
Okay, the other one is, I happen to see that, uh, uh, comprehensive, uh, capital, um, budget was, uh, 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 put in by Jerry. Uh, thanks for his effort and the entire staff. Um, the question that, uh, that Dan keeps going around and the thing that, uh, I'd like to make sure that it's incorporated with the trustees is as you spend money on projects, you just need to keep a running tab of how much you've spent and be aware from Augie how much you can spend in a given year of money that we have paid in principle and then realize that every million dollars you spend over that amount is going to affect the budget by approximately a quarter of 1% in the following year.
Okay.
You, you're passing a lot of different projects and everything. What, uh, the one thing you do need to do is keep a running total of the amount that you're spending and how it's being spent. You have, um, New York Paves that Augie has now explained to me, thank you, that what they do is they get them out from New York and what they've been doing is rolling over and saving it. In the capital budget, you have 900,000 in annual space, uh, paving. And then you have sources of revenue which include New York pave, CHIPS, extreme weather paving. You also have a project you're gonna be presenting night, tonight is Holstead Avenue, which would run around $3 million. We have saved by rollover, over a million dollars. Would you want to take the New York pave money and put it towards the Holstead Avenue project to reduce that? But then the money wouldn't be available for the annual paving. That's the only thing that you really want to keep track of. That way you know where, where you're spending your, uh, bond money and where you're gonna be spending your anticipated revenues from state aid or grants. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I thank you for your, but I, I have vast faith in our staff that they'll be handling all that, uh, with aplomb. Uh, the next up is Mr. Teager. Mr. Teager, you're muted?
I'm sorry. Um, I, I went to the Westchester Joint Water Works, um, agenda for May 7th and the audit of the bills. And indeed, individual municipalities do pay for not just replacements, but apparently, um, repairs. So it does seem excessive that the village pays both, I think, almost $100,000 a year to lease fire hydrants and then also pays every time they get repaired. So I'm not sure what the maintenance is about. Um, but I would hope somebody would look into it. Um, the other thing I want to comment, like I did last time, is that the board should probably understand that it would probably be unconstitutional for the mayor to cut people off at five minutes when he allows people he likes speaking to go on longer. Um, on your work session agenda, I was very surprised to see an email exchange that basically explained that the mayor had been added to the email distribution list for, I guess, nearly all the boards in the village, including the Board of Ethics, which is supposed to be privileged and confidential, and the land use boards. I was even more surprised to see that the mayor claimed this right under the law. I'm surprised because the previous mayor did this exact same thing. And he was told very clearly from the village attorney that the law that he was using to justify it, which is the same law this mayor is using, was not applicable. So I don't know if this has been resolved, but I do hope that the board sees that it is. Um, the other thing is, there was a very disparaging post on the Tom Murphy, Mayor of Mamaroneck Facebook page. And I know this board had a discussion about social media policy a while back. Um, and I'm just wondering if it's appropriate for the mayor to, um, use his, his mayor's Facebook page to attack people, residents in the village. I do hope the board will also take that up at some point, because I don't think it's good for the image of the village or anything else. Um, there's a contract on, I think it's the audit, on the work session for the oversight of the inflow and infiltration work that's coming up. Um,
One minute, please, sir.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I, I am. Is this gonna be brought to a meeting or would this contract just be awarded without it going to a public meeting? It's the, um, contract with Keller and Sessions to oversee the inflow and infiltration work. So nobody on the board knows if this will come before you or just be given to Keller Session? Is the village manager there? Does he know? Mr. Sarnoff's there? Does he know?
I think we can find an answer for that question. Can we, uh? Jerry or Dan, can you answer the question? It's not a number of questions.
I'll provide an answer to the board tomorrow.
Up to the public?
What?
14 minutes. 14 minutes.
So I, um, I think that's unfortunate if this is the kind of, um, way the village is running the village now. And I will fold into this, what's going on in, as I've heard it called, the art garden, I think, across from the police station. It's a
Mr. Tigger, sir, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Uh, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Uh, I just want to point out that
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, no. Uh, I want to point out that the last
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I still have the floor. If you want to cut me off, Mr. Mayor, you should cut me off.
Uh, so just to point out, uh, at the last meeting, Mr. Teager had way over 10 minutes. Uh, this meeting, we're going back to, uh, the rules and the regulations. Uh, I just want to point out that on my personal pages, and they are all on my personal pages, I will post whatever I want. I do not take back a word of what I posted or what I said. I stand by it. I think that there is a problem in the Village of Mamaroneck. And if you want to see what that problem is, I won't bring it to this meeting because this is about Village of Mamaroneck business. The other one was political. So if you want to look to see what I think there's a problem in the Village of Mamaroneck, please feel free to look at my Facebook pages. Anybody else with their hand up? No. Uh, yeah, you want to go to Charlotte Mountain?
Mayor, I do have a comment. I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor. I do have a comment because there's kind of a sense that this, uh, situation, this, this contract with, uh, with Keller Sessions kind of is a mystery or something. I, I believe it's on the work session and we didn't get to it.
Yes, it is.
So it'll be discussed, right?
Will be discussed. You're right.
That, that there's no issue there. Actually, uh, because the way it's described, it's very tight to save the sound litigation, which unfortunately has been going on for years. But it shouldn't be recused at this stage, but because it ties to a very old lawsuit, I'm, I'm recusing. So I won't be participating in that, but I understand my other colleagues will be looking at it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Since you made, uh, a public comment section, we have a village employee who has been instrumental in, uh, a, a project which you like to talk about. Uh, could we promote Ms. Charlotte Mountain? Good evening, Charlotte.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I came to talk to you about, uh, Juneteenth, which is a holiday commemorating the emancipation of, of enslaved people in the U.S. This is the date in 1865 in which the order was publicized in the state of Texas, two and one-half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued that first let the slaves of Texas know that they were free. This year, at Harbor Island Park, the village will be celebrating Juneteenth on June 19th at 8:30 PM. There'll be a group singing of Lift Every Voice and Sing with friends from St. Thomas Church Choir. There'll be a short informational video which will be presented by the Mamaroneck Public Library and they will be presenting a craft gift to the first 25 families that arrive. There will also be a local history presentation, which is being facilitated by Chief DeRusa and the Police Department. This will be followed by showing of the Disney film, Remember the Titans. Free parking will be available at Harbor Island Park beginning at 8:00 PM. Bring a picnic and a blanket or a lawn chair and also a friend. And I'd like to thank the Village Parks and Recreation Staff, LMCTV, and Mamaroneck Public Library. And I'd like to thank the Village Parks and Recreation Staff, LMCTV, and Mamaroneck Public Library, and our friends at St. Thomas Church. And I hope to see you on Saturday, the 19th at 8:30. You can pre-register. By going to V O M R E C. At recdesk.com. So you'll send an email to V O M rec@recdesk.com. To register for the event. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Charlotte. And thanks for spearheading this. And thank you for the hard work that you do every day for the Village of America and building. Trustee, I believe, has a question.
I have a question. Thank you, Charlotte. Actually, it was last, last year I was there. And it was beautiful and the music and the, I enjoyed it and I hadn't planned it. I just was walking by and I stayed. I didn't bring my blanket, but this time I hope. But the question is, do you have to pre-register? Because last year, for example, I just walked in. It was beautiful. But what's he, what's, what's the, so that we know. Or do you have to? What, if you know, if not, if not, we'll make it.
I think that, I think recreation is trying to get an, I tried to get a feel for how big of a crowd we might have. But I think that if you wander in, that would be absolutely fine. I would, I absolutely would welcome you.
Charlotte, thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, public hearings. And the first item is public hearing A. For PLRD 2021 meter parking on West Boston Post Road. I need a motion to open this public.
Done, moved.
I'll second. Before we call a roll. Trustee is Lucas. Norrie, you muted?
Yes. Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Jerry, you want to give a little primer?
Sure, Mayor. Obviously, everyone knows, or almost everyone knows, we have metered parking throughout the village. This would expand that meter parking. On the north side of Austin Post Road from St. Thomas's Church to Delancey. And then on the south side. Of West Boston Post Road between Mamaroneck Avenue and Delancey. Prohibiting parking in front of the Fire Department Memorial. And installing. Installing meter. Machines, not necessarily traditional parking meters, but the actual. Units themselves.
You mean the multi-meters, right, Jerry?
Multi-space, yeah, multi-space meter, sorry. I couldn't come up.
Yep.
Trustee, that is your question?
Just a quick question where it says from 1.340 feet east of Oriente Avenue. 2.60 foot east of, point thereof. That's all the entire north side? The box at the bottom of page one.
I don't understand the measurements is what.
East of Oriente, on the south side, east of Oriente. Little point 60 feet east thereafter.
It starts at 340 feet east of Oriente. I'm not sure where that is. And I don't understand why we're stopping 60 feet east thereof.
I think that might be.
Fireman's Memorial, right?
Yeah, I think it's the Fireman's Memorial.
It is.
32680 is, I think that may be a no parking schedule, but let me.
If you give me. It's boxing out the Fireman's Memorial, I believe.
Yeah, I just want to take a look at the code real quick.
That couldn't be, that's, that's. That's not the memorial. This is where you're, this is where you're putting in meter parking. Not where you're putting meter parking.
No, 32680 is parking prohibited at all times. So we had to carve out that section for to keep the open vista of the Fireman's Memorial.
So what it is, is the memorial's 340 feet from Oriente Avenue. And they're allowing 60 feet for the memorial and a no parking zone for the memorial.
No parking anytime, correct.
Yeah. Basically at Oriente Avenue and going all the way up to basically Mamaroneck Avenue on the south side. With the, with the exception of the Fireman's Memorial.
Correct. And this is, this, this that you just pointed out. Is the Fireman's Memorial. That's why it's there.
Yep. Yes, 323, the reference to 326-80, that's the section of the code where parking is prohibited, the schedule for parking prohibited at all times.
Okay, it's, it's sounds clear, but I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he's got it. Anybody else have any questions on the board? Jerry, what was the. Estimate for revenue?
Revenue was approximately $100,000 annually. Most of that revenue collected in the summertime when people try to bypass the parking fee at Harbor Island and park on the street.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the board? All right, go to Fiore Pilates.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, my name is Tracy. I'm Fiore Pilates for 17 years on Boston Post Road. And I'd like to ask a simple question. Who are these people that you feel are bypassing the fee on Boston Post Road?
They are, there are people who are using the park.
So if I may, you're talking about residents, you're talking about the patrons of the businesses that live there, and you're talking about the employees. Does that summarize the people?
I don't know if that's the whole list, but there's some people.
I'm just wondering if anyone considered the effects. Because clearly, the only reason for adding them is revenue. As you just stated, people are bypassing your parking fee at the harbor. So other than revenue, has anybody considered the detriment that this causes to the businesses that always kind of get a little pooped on on Boston Post Road as it is?
I understand your concern, but I have never seen a business be really detrimentally affected by parking. And anytime a new parking code, especially metered parking code is enacted, there's always, you know, the people. Project that it's going to really drastically affect them, but at the end, you know, time has shown that it doesn't. And I, I noted.
Where do the residents park since metered parking on Boston Post Road does not have overnight parking? Where do the employees park that are working during the day?
They'll have to either pay or they'll have to get a permit from the village.
Again, driving revenue and not benefiting the local businesses in any way whatsoever. Or the local landlords, for that matter. Has anyone told the residents that they can no longer park on Boston Post Road? Have the landlords been informed about that?
That's what, that's the purpose of a public hearing.
Yes, but it sounds like it's already done. Everyone I tried to contact prior to this meeting did not respond to me other than one person. And my conversation with that person implied that this is a done deal. This is not, really, nobody seems, seems to have any problem with it because it hasn't been directly addressed to the residents, the business owners, and the landlords. I, to be honest with you, I sat on this call, which is very precious time for me. Finally made it to this point, knowing anything I said will not matter. To be quite honest, almost anything everyone has said seems to not matter. But I thought was important, you should know. That in the years I've been in business, all I do is fight for Boston Post Road. He tried to put the day labor site years, years ago. Let me tell you, we had to pay for our own holiday decorations. You would not put up snowflakes. 15 years ago, I paid $250 to guarantee a snowflake would blow up on the pole in my location. All I'm saying is these might seem small to you, but I'm a small business. I already cannot get people to park comfortably. You can get killed on Boston Post Road trying to park your car. And now you want people to worry about the additional meters, the additional machines. Do you have you thought about the older senior citizens? Because I have 50% of my population above the age of 55 easily. If not more. And I could tell you, they cannot figure out that meter app. They can't figure it out. I go out there and stand on the street for them to figure out how to use this technology. And so not only are you adding meters, but you're taking away their ability to throw a few quarters in if they want. I just think these are things that the local community has not been able to express. And I think if you were dressed to some of your organization that helps seniors, you would hear them say to you, they hate these new meters. They have no idea where to park anymore. I mean, again, I know what I say is not going to matter, but you should take into consideration that the general public using the businesses. That by far have struggled all year do not need another obstacle.
Thank you. Just for folks who have their hands up, this is about the parking of Mamaroneck Avenue, if you, so just bear that in mind. Go to.
On Post Road, Tom.
I'm sorry, I'm Post Road. Thank you, Nora. Mr. and Mrs. Abati.
Hi, this is Laura Abadi, 170 Washington Street. And thank you for the reminder, Mayor Murphy. We do know we need to stick to the. Agenda item that plan, but it is in regard to parking. Although I know meters are very important for our community. I think maybe our timing might be a little off. In regard to the general masses and being equitable for everyone. I think if we circle back and have a discussion, I think we've had it a few times in regard to parking in the situation that we're having village-wide. I think, I think the issue is that. Our VOM piecemeals parking instead of really taking a sit-down look. Across the board, what we need to do with the ever-growing parking situation that we have in regard to meter parking. The village growing residential areas in need of space as well. This is an all of, it's an overflow. If you do one thing, one place, and you do something a little different another, we've never gone back to the table since 2013. We've never followed through with how are we going to correct this as a whole? What would be the best practice to get this accomplished? Let's have some equity and transparency and pull in. Many different areas of the VOM residents, business owners, visitors, and see how we can figure out how we could accommodate everyone. By putting a meter here, parking there. It's like that, that effect of putting rocks in a glass of water and the water spills out. We're not really, really fixing anything. We're just band-aiding an issue. You know, and we've all approached you and said, we would love to come to the table and try to figure out how to help this village in a whole in regard to parking. Because you've had many residents that have much knowledge and that have been here 54, 64. Maybe 84 years and possibly could lend a bit of a hand and be a part of a solution. And I know maybe my input is not interesting, most of the board, but I think that there's a lot of people that this affects. You know, when you do one thing in one place, it does overflow to the next. You know, we're not rebuttling parking. We want it. We want structure. We need that because the village is busting out, it seems. But instead of doing it in one place to fix an issue from overflow from revenue from the harbor, maybe we could figure out how we can fix it in a whole. And spend maybe a year or two at the table trying to figure out a new plan that could suit the whole entire village. And I'm sure I'm not going to get an answer. I would love one. I would love some dialogue instead of getting, you know, the curtain shut, but. We're here and we're available. We want to have input. We want to help too. And we want to be helped. And we want to add to the revenue of the village as well. And quality of life. And to be able to shop on the avenue without circling. Six or seven times, maybe eight, and getting fed up and going home. You know, there's, there's a lot that needs to be done and piecemealing is not, not the answer. We, you always end up chasing your tail when you do it in that aspect. So again, you know where to find us. We'd love to be a part of it. Ad-hoc committee, let's get parking moving. That's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Yes, Glenn.
Good evening. A couple of quick questions. Are the hours of the parking going to be 8:00, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Approximately, how many parking spaces are we looking at?
Jerry, you're muted.
I can't remember, Glenn, the exact number. It was in the 70s. Dan, can you pull that up real quick?
Okay. Food trucks, ice cream trucks, are they going to have to pay the meters?
Boston Post Road.
Yeah.
For a code that are allowed. Right?
That's correct, Dan.
And the last one is if you're using the app, what would the actual minimum cost to a village resident be?
It's the same as it is now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Teager. So we're going to mute yourself.
I know I took my, I de-raised my hand a while ago. So I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on the board?
You know, I guess I have the same concerns I have in the beginning. I think that that's, I understand that we need the revenue and one of the, this was. Raised when we thought we were really in a deeper financial hole due to COVID than previously, but I do think we're cutting out. A lot of parking for people who maybe can't afford to park at Harbor Island and who want, who want to use it. So my concern is that, you know, we're monetizing the park. And there, you know, every other park, well, except for Columbus Park, most of the other parks have available parking around them. That's free. And I'm, I'm just concerned that we're shutting out some people who may not, who may no longer be able to afford to use the park.
Anyone else? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Done, moved. Second.
What was it? Trustee is Lucas.
To close, yes.
Wintra?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Yes. Would anybody care to make a motion to adopt?
Done, moved.
I'll second. What was it? Trustee Lucas?
No.
Trustee Wester?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Thank you all. Jerry, I think at one time we discussed businesses in the off-season, being able to park in Harbor Island Park.
We have discussed that.
We have discussed it. Maybe that's something we could work out for the businesses on Boston Post Road, that their employees can park in the off-season.
But they can. They don't need permission. There's no charge for parking. They can do it now.
I don't think that they're aware of that.
But they can do it now. I mean, it's not. Well, not right now because we're in the season, but. But they can do it now. I mean, it's not, well, not right now because we're in the season, but.
Okay. Thank you. The next public hearing for community development block grants for federally, the federal fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four funding cycles. I need a motion to open a public here.
So moved. Second.
Augustino. Trustee is Lucas?
Yes.
Quenstrom?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Gerandi Martinez is here tonight. She wants to talk about a project for the community development block grants that the CRC, the Community Resource Center, is going to be applying for. And I just want to point out, the village of Mamaroneck does not have approval over the, the not-for-profits and what they apply for. We are not an approval authority. We're here to help and support that. Gerandi, hi. You're muted.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me on this call with you all. Um, if, if I may, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hope you do it better than the guy from West, the Joe Woodward.
Oh, Lord. Let's see.
There you go.
Am I good? Okay. Can you see my full screen now? Yes?
Yes.
Um, so I'm Gerandi Martinez with the Community Resource Center, and we are planning to apply for the Community Development Block Grants locally and are presenting to village residents right now, and of course, you all at the Board of Trustees. As a reminder, we are a community-based five oh one C three organization dedicated to advocating for and empowering the new immigrant community. Our work and our organization is a major point of entry for immigrants into the larger community, and we're second only to schools and medical providers because we provide a soft, safe space for people to access basic human needs. We are a bilingual and bicultural staff, and our programs create pathways to opportunities for the entire community, but mostly for low-income and new immigrant families. So as such, our, our pop, our residents, residents we serve struggle with poor and overcrowded housing, underemployment, limited and seasonal incomes, little to no English proficiency and lack of medical care. So really, we're, we're, we're targeting a low mod income community, and that's why we think that applying for CDBG funding would be appropriate for capital improvements. So the grant that we're applying for, and this is just to let the rest of the community know, is federally funded through the HUD program. And we apply also to the county, but we're, we need approval and we need to make everyone aware because we're, we're looking to make improvements to our capital space, to our, our, our building on one thirty-four Center Avenue. This grant would allow us to make significant improvements to our small two-campus buildings. So the Community Resource Center has two buildings. The Worker Center is a building to the right. It's an annex building, and it hosts a majority of adult children and youth programs, including workforce development. And this is part of a master three-year extension plan. Just for some context, we purchased the building in two thousand and fifteen. It does house the local food pantry and Head Start programs. Except for like in the last year, the food pantry obviously had to move to Columbus Park because of COVID restrictions. But it does have a number of different programs. So specifically, the Worker Center, we see three hundred clients per week in that space when we're not in COVID restrictions. And unfortunately, because it's an annex building, there is no plumbing or bathroom, which is creating hygiene, safety, and dignity issues. So in our phase one or year one, we're really looking to add an ADA compliant bathroom, a space for people to wash their hands with hands and soap, and a fire alarm system, which is obviously very, very important for keeping community members safe. The, I just wanted to show you everything that happens in that space, because I'm talking about something that people may, may not know what it looks like. These are the different programs that we house in that space. We, we host the Mexican consulate. We have children come in. Community building programs with different entities in the village of Mamaroneck, workforce development. We're obviously, it's our Worker Center, so our workers are there getting work through our hiring site. English as a second language, our annual graduation for our students. So we, we obviously have a lot of different programs in here, and people have to constantly leave the building and go to the other building to wash their hands and use the bathroom. This is creating safety issues for children, because children obviously need to have a safe space to use the bathroom, but you know, sometimes they're just running out and going out to the other building, and, and it worries me, especially on Center Avenue where people are racing down that street. So we think that a capital improvement project is not just, it's not a luxury, it's a necessity, and we, we really want to focus on installing plumbing, the ADA bathroom sprinklers, and, and tap into the sewer line on Center Avenue. And I just want to add how important hand washing has, has become. Obviously, we, it's always been important, but we're so much more aware of it. You know, due to our global trauma from the COVID nineteen crisis. And I'm just adding information here from the Director of Infection Prevention at Mount Washington Pediatric Hospital, Erica Jones. We should never underestimate, underestimate the importance of hand washing. It prevents illnesses, the spread of respiratory viruses, flu. I mean, not just the, the coronavirus, but also the flu. So we really want to provide a safe space for our community when we can return full force in person. Here is our budget. We are applying for a total of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for phase one of this three-year master plan. CRC does have to do a fifty-fifty match. Right now, we have CRC funds committed for this project at seventy-three, seventy-five, and CDBG funding. We would apply for eighty thousand. So we're looking to apply at this amount. And I, I know we're, I'm running out of time, but I would really like to have a client testimony, some words from a client and local resident of the village of Mamaroneck, who's on the call, and I think just has to be unmuted. Her name is Jadaita Munu, Munu, and she is, I think she's on the phone, so her number is sorry, the nine-one-four-six-six-two.
Will we get that? Seven-seven-five-two. Tara, unmute yourself.
Oh, Jadaita, can you unmute yourself?
It's star six or star seven.
Oh, star six or star seven. And.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good evening to all.
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, my name is Jadaire Muniz. I live on James Street at Harbor Heights. And my family and I have been helped by the community centers since we are displacement from Hurricane Maria in two thousand and seventeen. The community centers has, has always gone out of their way to help the families that arrive at their facility. And through them, I've gotten a job, a place to live, medical supplies for my ex-husband that had metastasized cancer, help for rent, so many other things that they've helped me with, and they still, they still are helping me. It's, and I think it's very important that they have a, a place capable of meeting the needs and the safety that families need while they're seeking the help that can sometimes be extended, depending on the situation that they're in. And it takes quite, like last Friday, I was there all day being helped by them, phone calls, paperwork, and, you know, it was a little uncomfortable not having a bathroom to go to on the Worker's Center. There's no place to wash their hands. If, if, if there's a fire, there's no sprinklers. I was an adult. I, I, you know, I did what I could do all, all day long, but there's young mothers and, and, and parents that go there with, with younger kids, and it's a little difficult for them to be able to to stay and, and be helped while they, they don't have the basic necessities they need. So I, I think I would call that to your attention and, and try to help the community center in any way you can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jadaita.
Thank you.
So as, as Jadaita pointed out, I, I, you know, structurally, and, and it's important for us to continue to move forward. We purchased the building in two thousand and fifteen. It's been there for over fifty years before we purchased it. Necessary upgrades are needed at this time. And, you know, the more the CRC grows in its services to empower local residents and, and partner with the village of Mamaroneck, the more we want to continue to expand our space. But, but this phase one is really about critical upgrades needed. The, again, they're not a luxury. They are a necessity. And we are seeking support from the village of Mamaroneck residents and their board to move forward with our community development block grant application through the grant period two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four, and we're applying for one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Well, you know, if you needed a letter of support or a resolution or anything, just let us know.
Oh, well, thank you. Um, can, my engineer is not on the phone call, but I can, I can text him if anybody has questions about the project. We don't know if we'll get funded. We're going to submit our application, so.
I mean.
You used to be a cap center. That, that building used to house the cap center.
That's right.
So, and you, you also suffered flood damage a few times over the years.
That's right.
I remember working on your elevator after one of the floods. So it's a village that, it's a village, it's a building that has a lot of functions, but, but needs a lot of love. Right?
That's right. Certainly, some, some TLC and upgrades are necessary.
So I, I would just say this seems to be a very modest request. It's not, you know, it's a very practical, modest request. And I would hope that you'd get the funding, and is it beneficial for not just the Board of Trustees, but, you know, members of the community to write letters of support?
Oh, sure. We would, we would really love that. We appreciate any letter of support from anyone located in the village of Mamaroneck, and, and we thank you for your generous support and compassion and understanding that this is, it, it's for all of us, really. The Community Resource Center is home to all of anybody who wants to be there, and we just want to provide a safe space.
Just for folks who might not be familiar with the Community Resource Center, you know, anytime I have a family or a person who was in need of resources or in need of reaching out to get help from other forms of government, I, I refer to them with Community Resource Center, and I, I do that knowing full well that they will be well taken care of. And we are very lucky as a board to have you in our community.
Thank you.
Gerandi or Tom, maybe if there's a way we can help people know where to write these letters of support, where, who they should be addressed to and where they should be sent, that'd be helpful.
Oh, sure. They can be addressed to the CDBG Westchester County. And they can be emailed to me at jmartinez@crcn-y.org.
And you have a website so people can look at, get information there too.
We do, we do. Our website is www.crcny.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Gerandi, could you stop sharing screen, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Just, just good luck with your application. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Same for me. Thank you for all you do and good luck, and we'll continue to support you as you do with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Mr. Tippett has a senator.
Yeah, I wish you well with your project, and I tell everybody with a nonprofit, this is your chance. Give, give out where somebody can send in the donation. And if you happen to have a GoFundMe site or something, please let the public know as they're sending in the letters to you. Put in a check. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Gerandi. Good luck to you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you, Jadaita. Bye. Good night.
Any other comments or questions about CGG grant process?
Well, you, as a village, we're looking to submit four applications, and I need to discuss that during this public hearing process as well.
Say that again, Dan. You guys speak.
The village, we're looking to submit four applications. I need to present those applications to the board during this public hearing process as well.
Okay, why don't you do that, Ken?
Okay. Share my screen now to go over the Mamaroneck Avenue School Area Pedestrian Improvements. Okay, does everyone see the screen now?
Yeah.
With the memo from AKRF. So the, the project that were, projects that we're looking to submit grant applications for are kind of evolving from the pedestrian safety walking tours that the Traffic Safety Commission undertook several years ago. The first one they did was in the area around the Mamaroneck Avenue School and identified a number of improvements to be considered. In, I think all told, it was slightly over two million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements around the, around the school. So working with Mr. Carmody from AKRF, we looked at how we could phase this project to attempt to leverage the maximum amount of CDBG funds that we could get. The, during the current cycle, a municipality or any applicant can submit up to four grant applications with a maximum funding request of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be to be matched by the applicant. And so that would be five hundred thousand dollars per phase with the combined funding, and then five times four is two million. So there's a fifth phase that we've identified, which we, we wouldn't apply for funding at this time. But we could see what would happen during the course of the program. I'm gonna just go over the, there's a map that Mr. Carmody prepared that details the phasing. Phase one would, you know, be along Mamaroneck Avenue, Elliot Avenue. We'd like to construct two bulbous with ADA ramps at the intersections with Mamaroneck Avenue and Elliot. Install drainage improvements for existing catch bases displaced by those bulbous. Reconstruct sidewalks on the north side of Mamaroneck Avenue between Gertrude Avenue and Bradford Avenue. Install an ADA ramp on the northeast corner of Mamaroneck Avenue and Gertrude Avenue. The cost during that phase. The cost during that phase is four hundred and eighteen thousand uh, with grant funding request of two hundred and nine thousand, that's the fifty percent. It would be nice if we could uh, somehow coordinate this with uh, some of the work the county will be doing on Mamaroneck Avenue next year. I think as the mayor may have mentioned uh, one or two meetings ago, uh, the, uh, the county will be repaving uh, Mamaroneck Avenue. From up in White Plains down to the railroad bridge in uh, Mamaroneck. The final phase of that project, which is likely to occur in twenty twenty-two. Is the area between the I ninety-five, I ninety-five bridge and the railroad bridge. The second phase of the uh, project which we would submit a grant for uh, would be to uh, reconstruct the sidewalks on the south side of Mamaroneck Avenue. Between New Street and Hillside, uh, so it's approximately seven hundred and seventy-one linear feet. And then install six ADA pedestrian ramps at the intersections with, with Mamaroneck Avenue and Hillside Avenue, Nostrum Avenue and New Street. The estimated cost of that phase is four hundred and sixteen thousand uh, one dollar uh, with a grant funding request of two hundred and eight thousand dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the third phase, uh, which you can see on the screen uh, is uh, constructing ADA ramps at the intersection of Mamaroneck Avenue. And New Street uh, constructing bulbous with ADA ramps at the intersection of New Street and Ralph Avenue. Uh, and then drainage improvements that for the displaced catch basins and the reconstruction of sidewalks on the north side of Mamaroneck Avenue. Between New Street and Elliot, uh, that phase has an estimated cost of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars with a grant funding request of two hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The final phase uh, is, or the fourth phase would be constructing uh, bulbous with ADA ramps at the intersections of Ralph and Elliot. Drain, again drainage improvements and uh, reconstructing sidewalks on the north side of Ralph between New and Elliot. That's about two hundred and twenty-three uh, linear feet of sidewalk. Again, uh, estimated cost of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand uh, grant funding request of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Yeah, I think as, as the mayor mentioned, this has been a, a program that the village has been. You know, immensely successful at uh, getting grants to implement infrastructure improvements uh, over the past forty years. You know, we think that helped, we used funds to install the spray ground. Which is a new playground at Stanley Avenue Park, uh, we've done uh, new sidewalks and curving on East and West Boston Post Roads. And then Mamaroneck Avenue all the way from Post Road up to about Grand Street. So it's been a very valuable program for the village over the years. I, I don't have the exact number, but I know it's in the seven figures. And it's, it's a tremendous tool for us to, you know, do a lot of good projects for the village. So those are the, those are the projects that we're looking to uh, submit for. The applications are due June twenty-fifth. You know, in, in prior years, uh, we usually discuss CDBG projects at the second meeting in June. But because of the way the calendar falls this year, uh, the, uh, our next meeting is until the twenty-eighth until after. The applications are due, so that's why I will take the opportunity now to discuss this with you and uh, seeking approval to submit these applications. Through several resolutions on the board meeting tonight.
Okay, Brian, a board, any questions or concerns? Dig, can you just start sharing, please?
Absolutely.
Dan, what's the timeframe on all these projects, faith or phases one through four? I know you said there might be a phase five, but just assuming one through four.
Well, we would probably be, if, if we're, you know, lucky enough to get these uh, projects uh, approved. They would take course, take place with the course of uh, three years, uh, because that's a three-year funding cycle. Even though the first year is technically twenty twenty-two, what's it, the twenty-two? The twenty twenty-two fiscal year, it's the federal fiscal year, which I believe starts uh, September one, so. Hopefully we'd be able to start a project in summer of next year and see how the phasing progresses. Obviously, when you're dealing with, with uh, construction around schools, it's, you know, best to get it done during the summer.
Thank you.
But uh, hopefully we'll be up to uh, the county, if they approve these grants, they will uh, they will set the schedules.
Thank you. Anything else important? Uh, Mr. Tippett has his hand up.
Hey, Dan.
Hey, Glenn.
Do we uh, front the money for the uh, projects and then get reimbursed by the grant after the project's done, number one? And question for the board, uh, the villages portion, would that be bonded? By the, by the village, what would be the funding source? Thank you.
So um, the, the first question that Glenn asked was about the reimbursement. Uh, the answer is uh, the village uh, pays, pays the cost and then we, we will put in for reimbursement uh, from the county. Uh, that's how it's been done through the entire history of the program. As far as the bonding, I mean, ultimately that's a policy matter and the board can choose if, if we're awarded grants and get funding. The board can fund this in the manner they see most fit.
Like I says, historically, it has been bonded.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, any motion, close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And uh, Mr. Sono, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All equal rule.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
All right. Moving on to the order of the bills. No, we're not adopting now. You adopted the uh. So it's, it's item four G. See it?
Yeah.
Okay, me, oh, you just don't have to be. Order of the bills. Okay. First, there's a budget transfer. This is, we're transferring money from the emergency tenants protection invoice. Uh, three thousand one hundred and forty dollars uh, to the emergency tenants, same amount. Uh, standard security voucher for disability insurance, uh, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-two and that's being transferred to recreational salaries. Any questions or concerns? None, okay, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All right, please, trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Authorization to executive budget transfer.
One question, sorry, I have a do, a question, this, this is for the old budget, so how, how, how long do we carry this kind of transfers? When do we close, when do we close accounts?
June thirtieth.
Yep.
This, okay. This and then the next meeting will be the last transfers within.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Resolution authorized into executive budget transfers to COVID relief budgets. Jerry created a COVID relief line in the budget uh, to uh, prudently to fund stuff just like this. So this would be COVID personnel, uh, thirty-five dollars and two cents to COVID miscellaneous equipment. COVID personnel part-time, eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars sixty-seven cents to COVID miscellaneous equipment, same amount. Uh, and it would be COVID personnel overtime, thirty-eight thousand two hundred and two dollars and two cents to COVID miscellaneous equipment. Jerry, what was the miscellaneous equip?
Those machines when you come in. To Village Hall and we read your temperature and some lady with a nice voice tells me that you're okay and then I can move on to the next. Um, uh, protection glass and, and um, uh, uh, plexiglass barriers. Especially down at the recreation department, uh, because we get a lot in May and June and July and August, we get a lot of people visiting, buying passes in person. Uh, those kinds of things, mayor, all, all uh, COVID related expenses that um. We will get, um, we will apply for reimbursement now that the uh, emergency is going to expire.
Okay, Dave, uh, any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is manual order of vouchers, it's mostly uh, payments to Westchester Joint Water Works, thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
A second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next item on the agenda is ordered vouchers for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So, you know, although we started the new year, this, these are bills that have came in uh, that were accrued to last fiscal year. Five hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-three cents. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Mr. Natchez?
I have a few questions, uh, page one, the return of escrow to the masons, have they completed all the requirements, including the association?
Yep.
Seven, uh, the hospital Dino's invoice to Westchester Joint Water Works, what's that for?
Hold up. Bob?
Sorry. Your, your invoice for Westchester Joint Water Works? Three hundred and eighty-five dollars?
I'll have to check that, I don't know.
No, hold on, we, we looked at it this morning.
Yeah, you looked that up.
Yeah. We provided it this morning, hold on one second. I just have to find it.
Can I have you read it off, Jerry?
Yeah, please do that, because I'm looking for it now, I can't find it, sorry.
Review emails from Westchester Water Works, uh, general counsel, state court order of filtration plant and EPA and cover letter.
It's the EPA now.
Okay. Any other questions, Dan?
Well, I, yeah, I do, but um. I, I don't understand why we're, what we're doing with West, with the filtration plant in terms of your work, Bob, that's right. And that, can you explain a little bit?
Yes, we discussed this uh, at the last meeting in executive session. The US Attorney's Office has uh. Started a process for negotiating a consent order with regard to the filtration plant that would affect the village, not, they want the village to be a party to it. And we discussed this at the last meeting. Uh, and uh, the, we've started looking into it.
I have a question, why wouldn't that be under the retainer? Uh, because I think we, we have not really authorized, we're engaged in, in kind of this specific litigation issues. I know, I know, I know it's a consent order, I know it's Joint Water Works, I know we're part of it, et cetera, but uh, I think our discussion was more kind of what to do about it. So, I, no, no, this is, this is probably small, but, but I want to just to be clear that, that the board has not kind of authorized that we move in that direction. I don't want to disclose more about, about the meeting itself.
I'll, I'll, I'll make it off the bill, but it's not retainer work. Negotiating consent orders is not retainer work, so.
But, but we have not agreed to get into that, we didn't, we didn't agree or this, yeah, we have not kind of crossed that line where we say we're engaging this, so. But, but I, I think we could also discuss it offline or, not offline, but I mean, uh, if you want to discuss it more, I, I, I'm not one of. I mean, I mean, you have to be comfortable with what you do, I, I, I also have to, you know, do, do, we all have to do our, our job here, so. I just want to make it clear that we have not authorized engaging in that so far.
My recollection, my recollection was different, but that's okay, I'll take it off the bill.
I, I, I thought in our discussion, and I don't want to go into what it was, but I thought we went um, far enough in our discussion to authorize some further discussions. And so I think the small amount that Bob has billed for this um, is appropriate.
I, I thought that we, that Tom was going to talk to the town about.
Uh, Bob talked, Bob talked to, also had a discussion with Bill Maker about it.
That's right, and the town has since, the town board has since authorized jointly retaining us.
And, and, you know, that was where we left it, where, where we left it, you know, now we're talking, you know, about something that we were talking in executive session. But since the ball's been open, uh, with, how we left it was that we were going to uh, try and see if we could co-share with the town. Does that ring a bell with anybody?
Clear as a bell.
Ye- ye- yes, but we were deciding what, that once you were clear that, we will decide whether we actually really. In addition to Joint Water Works having their own council, we would, we would have this additional request, so it was more of an exploratory. You know, discussion to see if we would go in that direction, so that's why I think we have a. But we haven't crossed that line of, of additional work, but I, I see Bob sees it differently, I think we have a. When, when we have that discussion here, I'm client, I'm, I'm your colleague and you're very, I respect you tremendously, but here as client, you know, today is a small one. But, 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 once we, we cross the threshold, then you're billing under your litigation rate, which is, which is three fifty. Before, we have a very generous retainer where we explore this thing, so. I, I, I think that once we hear from you again of where, where we are with other, other issues of the matter, then we can proceed. But once we, once we start litigation, that opens the, another door and actually, one of the items we have not discussed, uh. It's on the agenda for a while, is managing litigation, we have a memo on that. And precisely that memo goes in that direction, once, before we start the litigation clock. We, we, we need to know what, once we're engaging, because we, we know the last couple of years, we've, we've responded to a lot of litigation. Uh, and, and we have to be careful how we have, we handle this, so it, today's a small, but once we cross that threshold, then you're really in charge of the case. And then you're really billing, so, so that's why I want to be careful how we, so we cross that threshold, that it's really more of a policy matter. And so that we're really comfortable with, with, with uh, the retainer and now all the good services you provide to us.
All right, he said he was gonna take it off, we, we, we'll pay it tonight, just give us a credit. Okay?
On um, page eight, RF, is that the monthly retainer uh, or payments uh, with other payments?
Payments with ser- of services that they provide us. Payments, provide, payments of services they provide the planning board.
So, but that's on the monthly basis, or is that uh, on the individual things beyond, beyond their retainer?
Beyond the retainer, it's not on a monthly basis. There are a lot of work, they're doing a lot of work with the planning board, Dan, did you look at this before? You gave us the.
Yeah, no, I, I believe it's um, I think it incorporates uh, the, you know, work with the planning board. Uh, I think it may also incorporate some of the traffic safety stuff, I have to take a look at the uh, the invoice again.
If, if that's the case, it'd be helpful if it could be broken down so we have some idea where we're going on stuff, okay? For the future, thank you. Page thirty-two and thirty-four, there are items for the kayak dock bill, and I asked.
And I asked the questions. Have they been built? Have they been installed? And do we have permits?
The DC provided us with all of that. We have that paper trail. We can provide you.
And we're in compliance with ADA.
And the ramp, the ramp, all that stuff. We have all that.
Any other board members?
Yeah, um, I had emailed earlier about some of the White Osterman invoice. And I was just concerned that, and if you just assure me that you've checked the bills and it's fine, that's fine with me. But it looked like on the itemization to me that quite a bit was being billed separately that should have been part of the retainer. Things like comfort, you know, calls with the mayor and such.
Right. And so we discussed it, Kelly, today with staff.
Yep.
We're not lawyers, so we kind of don't know. What's retained or what's not. I'm going to take their word for it, but in the past. But what I'm asking is that Bob and, or Mark, probably Mark would be best. If we can review the bills from outside attorneys, make sure that that's being differentiated and that we're clear on that. Because I'm not clear on that.
Let me point out that a. Resident had a complaint about a pool.
Yeah.
I emailed the planning department and then that precipitated a phone call with, with the attorney. I don't think that that should be charged to us. You know, I really don't. That's got to be part of the retainer. You know, and also, you know, there's phone calls from Kathy Sable about matters before the board. That should be part of the retainers.
Well, I think.
We, we've had this discussion with them before.
Can I just say something? I think the mayor and the deputy mayor should read the agreement. Because I don't think they understand it. And actually, you voted against it. So you better read that, understand what we're doing. Because I think what they're doing, they're, they're, they have a way of working. And I think Jerry should be the one, should be the one looking at this. But I mean, of course, you can preview, but they, they have, they have a system that they, they, they explain what they were going to do. I think they're doing what they told us they were going to do. And actually, you raise a very important point is that if any of us, I think, reach out on a land use matter to our council or other council. I think it'll be important to share it around so we know what is happening. Or if that incurs a bill, then, then we all get the benefit of knowing what's happening. Because it's important.
Well, it, it was a phone call.
And to, to a law that's being passed or, or a specific case, to know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. It was a phone call and, you know, I believe Kelly and I have read it. So let's not be condescending about Kelly and I reading. We might see it differently. And I, I don't think that, you know, to say that the mayor and deputy mayor need to read it. You know, I've been doing this a long time and I know it should be covered by a retainer agreement or it shouldn't be covered by a retainer agreement. And if that retainer agreement doesn't cover things like phone calls, it's not worth anything to us.
Read the contract or let's have a conversation. Wait, wait a minute. Let me finish, mayor. Let's be clear. This is, this is, this is nonsense. Let's have a conversation. Wait a minute, let me finish.
You gotta stop being so condescending.
Finish, mayor. Let me be proactive. I'm actually going to propose something. Let's have a conversation with our, with our lawyers, land use lawyers, so that we have clarity of the, of the retainer. I understand what they propose. I think they're doing right. They are not billing separately from the retainer. That's how they build the retainer. So let's have a conversation. Let's not confuse the public. Let's, us as board. Have a conversation with them. We'll make sure that it's limited. It probably, and we'll clarify things with them. And then we come back and make, make, make work as properly as we should.
Kelly, got your head up?
Yeah, I don't know that the board needs to have that conversation. I think it's a conversation that village staff can have with them. And I mean, Victor, I just want to assure you that before I raised these questions, I did pull a copy of the retainer. I've had it. I've, I've raised this question with their billing several times. I have reviewed the agreement. I don't think it's a very good agreement, but I have reviewed it. And so I just, I would hope that you would assume that before I ask these questions, that I am doing my homework, which, which I had done.
Let me just clarify that what the emails that you have exchanged and from your presentation, I don't think you understand the retainer. So then let's be proactive. Let's have Jerry clarify this. If we're still in a misunderstanding, let's all meet with our council and all, let's all agree. That we need to have a very good working relationship with all our councils and we'll clarify our differences as we just did with, with Bob. Because it's really important. We're dealing with not just very serious issues, but, but, you know, high legal fees. So, so let's just be proactive and clarify things. So it's, that's, that's, that I think it's very important. So your, your questions are very, very valuable. You have concerns, very legitimate. Let's clarify them.
Okay, I agree.
Uh, anybody else? Mr. Teager does his hand up.
Hi, I'm. Yeah, I couldn't help but overhearing the foil discussion tonight. And a lot was made of the twenty-one foil requests today. Eighteen of those entries were for invoices. Those are pretty simple. Walk over the file, pull it, scan it, it's done. Village manager said, village policy to do all the easy ones first. I'm waiting on the. Attorneys invoices on a form. Again, it's wrong.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Do it. You're going in and out.
And, and this isn't about the order of bills.
How foil is running in the bill, in the village? And I hope you continue the conversation. My questions about this are. Page. Five, Jesus, my eyes are bad. Page five, Land's Electric, disconnect for film shoot. I assume it was a nighttime shot on the street. Is that something we might get reimbursed? Or from the film company? Or something that maybe should be written into the contract next time? If there are add-ons like that. Um, page. Six. Thirty-four thousand dollars to Deffrey Store for. The bond, bond resolutions for twenty and twenty-one, twenty, twenty and twenty, twenty-one projects. Are those done? Is that what we're paying for?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a question about white menoscopy on page seven also. There are two entries. There are two entries. The first one is through April. The second one is through March and April. That seems. Wrong. So. You should check it. There the electric on page fifteen. Install no left turn sign notes. I'm sorry, install no left turn for trucks sign. It's forty-two hundred dollars. Do we know where this was? Intersection? And whether it was a sign or is this a brand new light or something? It's a lot of money for a sign.
Jerry, can we answer that? That's not a bad question.
Oh.
Or the other one's bad.
I'll get you an answer, Dan, tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, I gotta say that. The controller's office says that when you guys pay bills, you're supposed to have enough documentation in front of you. To know what you're paying for and know if it was for a proper municipal use. That's their guidance, not mine. I wouldn't have to put in twenty-one floor requests if you guys actually had. You know, I don't know, a scan of the stuff as it comes in and could be referenced if you needed to. Doesn't say you have to look at everything, but you should be able to verify what you're. Paying for. ABC Sports, I'm sorry, page thirty. Bottom of the page, ARC. Payment for twenty-four dozen softballs. Do we buy softballs for the league? Because I don't think I've ever seen that. A payment like that before. Or I would have assumed they supply their own balls.
I would assume that that would be for the camp.
Twenty-four dozen. Some long hitters.
Mr. Teager, your time is up. Thank you very much for your pertinent questions. Glenn has his hand up.
Yeah, I know you're doing audit, but. I actually had question, some questions on the twenty-twenty-two expense report. There is a. Number of items that are under encumbered. And at the same time. The budgets were adjusted. Upwards, sometimes for the exact same amount. Could somebody explain? What, what went on there?
I don't know.
It's, it's a quarter to ten. You get the answer? Go answer.
What pages? Glenn, what page?
If, if you look under in, in cupboard, right, let's say.
What page, Glenn?
Marines and docks. Department twenty-two thirty.
Thirty-two thirty?
Twenty-two.
No, I don't think he's talking about the audit of the bills, guys.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the expense report.
Right.
Why are we going over?
Twenty-three, eight, I'll give you one example, A seventy-two thirty.
You know what?
Point forty-ten, under Marine and Dock Supplies. The original budget was four thousand dollars.
Glenn?
Adjusted budget is sixty-two fifty-nine thirty-six. And you have twenty-two fifty-six thirty-six encumbered. In other words, the, the amount that the budget was adjusted is the amount of encumbered. I'm just asking one.
So basically, we have encumbrances at the end of the year that roll over into the new year. Those encumbrances that roll over into the new year adjust the, not the original budget, but the adjusted budget and show up as an encumbrance in the current year. And that subsequent year.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. My pleasure, Glenn. Let, let's keep the comments to what we're working on, please. So is there any other concerns or can we have a motion to accept?
One, one comment, which is as we, as we are, as we are pointing invoices that relate to cases or issues that we're refused from. There's one at page eight, Arcade is assistance with the STS, which I should probably say the sound settlement. Since I'm recused in that case, it's gone for five years now or more, then I'll, I'll stay out of that one.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And a motion.
So moved.
Nora seconded, but she was on mute. Or you call roll.
Sorry, second.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Matt Jazz?
Yes.
The four? Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you. Next up is fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Ordered vouchers of one million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Questions, concerns?
Just want to clarify that the other bill was, was adjusted as, as we discussed, right? Before you sign it, mayor.
No, it wasn't adjusted. What I said was he'll give us a credit.
Okay.
And he agreed to that and I trust him.
Okay. Of course, I didn't hear you there.
Yep. All right. On the order of vouchers that we're on, anybody have any questions or concerns?
None.
And your motion?
So moved.
Second. Will you, trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Matt Jazz?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Thank you. Give us a few later. All right, old business. Return of funds, resolution authorizing return of funds for regatta parking. We had talked about this before. This is a refund of a payment of seventy-five hundred dollars that was in a long dormant escrow account. To Bridget McGraw and Franklin Investwas. Moving out of Regatta and this is the way to, we. Came up with to resolve the situation regarding their parking spot. Somebody have any questions or concerns? All right, I'd like to make the motion and I want to thank Ms. McGraw, Ms. The Lastwes for being patient with us. And also just for being really nice people and really great residents of this village for the past twenty-one years. They are moving out of the community, but they were a pleasure to know.
Yep.
I'll second.
Mr. Fusco? Trustee, Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Matt Jazz?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, Mr. Sposeino, thank you for working on this and for coming to a resolution on the matter.
You're welcome, there.
Bench donation. So bench and hub around at a village park, doesn't even say how well. Mr. Wayne and Ms. Bonnie Lee Lynn are desirous of donating a bench and plaque to the Village of America to be placed in the East Basin of Harboretum Park. In loving memory of cow shoe calling. And the cost of the bench is one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. And we thank Mrs. Lynn for the generous gift to the community. I'll make that motion.
A second with thanks.
Augustino. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Matt Jazz?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution scheduling, public hearing, amending chapter one eighty-six of the flood law. What this is, is people apply to FEMA to change the designation of their property under the flood maps. If they have the proof to back up their, their case, FEMA makes the change. And the Village of Atlantic then must incorporate that change into our flood law. There are three of them, and this is just for scheduling in the public hearing. And the public hearing will be scheduled on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Somebody have any questions or concerns? Someone please make the motion.
I'll move. Second.
Thank you, ladies. Augustino, call the roll. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winshere?
Yes.
Matt Jazz?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution scheduling, no, I'm sorry, resolution authorizing Holstead Avenue pavement, pavement. Resolution scheduling, no, I'm sorry, resolution authorizing Holstead Avenue pavement, pavement survey.
We didn't get to that in the work session.
Yep, we did not.
We did not. Jerry, did you need it tonight?
Well, we're trying to time out the, trying to time out the paving for, you know, later in the, in the fall. But we can, we have to do it for the next meeting because it's twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-eight thousand five for just the survey. It's the three million dollar project, so it's not something that, you know. We can just rush along. It's a giant project throughout the village that's going to happen.
Okay, this will happen, the first item on the work session in two weeks.
Jerry, is it possible to get a, an additional? Bid from somebody from another surveyor? I mean, I have nothing against, it's only a surveyor, and they're a great surveyor, but it's a lot of money.
We will ask for an additional bid from another company, but if that bid doesn't want to bid on it, if that company doesn't want to bid on it, then we'll use that as a second solicitation. If that's okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, if they don't, if somebody's not going to bid on it, we don't want to twist their arm.
Yeah, that's right.
But, no question.
We got a couple of weeks, I can do that, no problem there.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution authorizing purchase of equipment implement field receiving program. Jerry, would you like to talk about this for a minute?
Mayor, this purchase will allow us to. In-house, a service that we currently pay in excess of thirty-six thousand dollars a year for. It will also replace the tractor that we use for the beach machine. It will train staff with the equipment that we now own to be able to apply organic fertilizer to not just Harbor Island Park, but other areas as well. Florence Park, Columbus Park, places that have high use, even though they're not organized sports. Residents still do get together and play sports on those open areas. We'll be able to reduce compaction on those areas as well as maintain the fields. Properly at Harbor Island Park. It's not that the company wasn't doing a good job, they were doing a good job, but we can do the same job for a lot less money, and so good purchase.
And as you pointed out in the work session, this equipment could also be used or will be used in the raking of the beach.
It will be, it'll be used daily in the raking of the beach. In addition to that, we'll use this equipment if we buy an attachment in. In the future to assist us with the snow plowing and snow removal, but the spreader that we're purchasing for the tractor can be our third. Tractor that we use to apply, apply calcium chloride to the sidewalks and open area, parking areas, things like that.
Great. I'd be happy to, anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, I think you have a hand up.
Oh, yeah, frequent flyer. Come on, Glenn.
Jordan Sweet, cost and how is it being paid for? Thank you.
Cost is eighty-nine thousand and change for all the equipment, and it's going to be bonded.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make the motion.
A second.
Or, trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi, the next item on the agenda, we're going to hold over the Holstead Avenue Bridge to. A changed resolution. Resolution authorizing additional funding, set up funding for additional days of operations, spray ground. During budget time, we did not know that the. Community and the world at large would be opening up. As well as it's opening up right now, and consequently, we cut the budget both to save money and because we didn't think it would be needed for the spray ground. Spray ground is a very, very popular item, especially for the under-ten crowd. We use it a lot, the day camps use it, so this will allow us to pretty much run the spray ground on almost, almost hours during the summer. And I know a lot of moms with young kids will be very happy about that. Questions, concerns? I'll be happy to make that motion.
A second.
Augustino? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing submission of applications for community development block grants. We have to take these one at a time.
Apparently.
Community developed block grant program phase one of Mamaronek Avenue School. So the document in front of you, four G one, has everybody had a chance to look at it? This would require matching fund of two hundred nine thousand from the village on a four hundred eighteen thousand dollar project. Any questions, concerns? I'll make the motion on that one.
Second.
Go ahead, Nora.
Second.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Community Development Block Grant Program Phase Two. This is a two hundred and eight thousand. Dollar project for the village, it's actually a four hundred sixteen thousand and one dollar project. The village's half is two hundred and eight thousand and fifty-six. Questions or concerns? Four G two, it's the document in front of you, label four G two. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Or. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, just as a background, what we are approving here are applications for community development block grants to improve pedestrian safety around Mamaronek Avenue School. Four G three. Four hundred eighty-five thousand dollar project, the village share is two hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. This to create bump outs, ADA ramps, and to make it just safer for our community down in Washingtonville, reconstruct sidewalks between New Street and Elliot Avenue. Anybody have any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. All right, Community Development Block Grant four G four. This is another bump outs, ADA ramps at the intersection of Ralph and Elliot Avenues, drainage improvements for existing catch basins by bowl bouts. And reconstructing sidewalks on the north side of Ralph Avenue between New Street and Elliot Avenue. Two hundred twenty-three linear feet sidewalk. It would be four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar project. The village's share would be two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, should be two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred, the village share. May I check out to you? You're kidding me, right? Yes, that's right. And I'll make the motion.
I'll second, as amended, right?
As amended, yes.
What is called roll? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The nuns taught me math, but they taught me nothing else. Resolution authorizing the execution of interminable agreement for Westchester County for a community development block grant fund to implement infrastructure on Waverly Avenue and Prospect and East Prospect. Now, what this is, what the ones before, before were are requests for funding. This is a situation where we were approved for funding, and we are now. Going about accepting that agreement with the county. This is a four hundred thousand dollar project, the village's. Part is two hundred thousand dollars, we do a fifty percent split on these projects. And this is infrastructure in Washingtonville and our Prospect and East Prospect Avenue. Any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augustino? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next up is. For, I, resolution authorizing the Coast Guard auxiliary flotilla to serve beer in Harbor Island Park. Every year on the Fourth of July, the Coast Guard, the volunteers down there, the auxiliary flotilla seventy-five has a little ceremony. Where all the ships parade past the Coast Guard. Station, there's usually a man of the cloth there who gives them a blessing, and they have some snacks, and sometimes they have a little wine, sometimes they have a little beer. I guess this year they're having canned beer. And just so folks know, to serve beer in Harbor Island Park requires the approval of the board of trustees. Although it's heat toner, I will be happy to make this motion.
I just have a question, is this beer that's made available to the public or is this just for the people in the flotilla?
It's for whoever comes down for the ceremony. It's the Fourth of July, usually it's George Latimer, me, maybe a couple of trustees and Nancy Solz and the guys from the flotilla. I don't think they've ever turned anybody away, but. You know, it's not a big, it's not a big draw.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Augustino? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next up, a second communication.
One. I'm.
Yeah. Couple of items. The trustees. Need to review the. Laws on food establishment, especially. The idea of curbside service, you have not a new type of restaurants. That curbside service is actually part of their model. We've had chopped salad in front of the boards, and the way the laws written right now. They cannot operate with the model they have. The only rest, only fast food establishments that are allowed to have takeout service, which means the person can walk the food out to the car. Right now are full-service restaurants. There's no reason why a casual fast restaurant, if they wish. Can't have an employee walk the food out to the car, especially. With everything's happened in the last two years. So it's something the board has to address. Lastly. We're getting into June. I hope that everybody has their shots. We're getting close to fully being operational again. And I just wish that everybody stay safe. We only got a couple of more months to go, and I do believe I owe a few people on this panel a lunch or a dinner, right, Jerry? Take care.
Right. Okay. Update your reports from those manager?
Mayor, there's a. Few items that I need to file for the records, the I M A, which is the county for the food scrap program. Our agreement with Weatherworks, which is our weather forecasting. Agency, company, our agreement with PERMA, and then the agreement with the fireworks display. For the Fourth of July. In addition to that, I, the meeting is going long, so I'll cut it short, but I want to reinforce. The excellent work and participation from Charlotte Mountain, Jason at Rec, Jeff at Parks, everyone in the Recreation Department. As well as the Police Department, the Police Department's involved, the library's involved, and others are involved, and so it's going to be a fantastic event. And earlier last week, early last week, I thanked Shannon Purdy for starting us on that, on that journey. To celebrate Juneteenth, and I think it's very important for this community to recognize that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Jerry.
Oh, wait, Jerry?
Yeah.
Water Quality Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, Water Quality Committee. So for several months, we've been asking for volunteers for the Water Quality Advisory Committee, a committee that. I guess maybe stopped meeting before I joined the village, and I think that we try to resurrect that. So if anyone is interested in the Water Quality Advisory Committee. I think, I think it should be resurrected now that we're making the improvements and we have a lot of data from. Agencies like Save the Sound, you know, entities like Save the Sound, I think it's important, but if someone is interested and wants to volunteer, please send it over to Sally Roberts. And the mayor knows Sally Roberts email address.
Sally Roberts email is sroberts@b o m n y dot org. Once again, that email, sroberts@b o m n y dot org.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. clerk treasurer, do you have any reports tonight?
Yes, mayor. First half, tax payments are due by July first, online payments are available and on the website. You can also call into village hall if you want to make a payment by phone. The second item is that GP permits will expire on May thirty-first, or have expired on May thirty-first, and then you purchase online or in office or by appointment. That is all, mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Village Attorney, you have another report tonight?
Nothing for me, mayor.
Okay, we have minutes for commission boards and committees, minutes of what Christie's work session, a regular session on May twenty-fourth, minutes of the Board of Architecture Review, May fourth and May twentieth and June first. Twenty-twenty-one, minutes of the Committee for the Environment meetings on November seventeenth and December twentieth, March sixteenth and April twentieth of twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, minutes of the Arts Council on May third and nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of the Tree Committee of November tenth and December seventeen, twenty-twenty, and January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of the Planning Board of March twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth, April twenty-eighth, May twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. What we need next. We don't get to adjourn tonight, we're going into executive session. So we don't adjourn this meeting, what we do is we just leave this meeting, and after executive session, we have to come back and close this. Okay. Tonight, the executive session topics are A B C Properties versus the Village of Mamaronek. One oh five one D of the Public Offices Law. McCrory versus Village of Mamaronek, also the same title, one oh five one D of the Public Offices Law. And the other one is C, full-time village attorney, that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one F of the New York State Public Offices Law. To discuss the medical financial credit employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to. Appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. I suggest we take them one at a time. I'll make a motion on A B C Properties versus the Village of Mamaronek.
I'll second.
Or. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Next item, McCrory versus the Village of Mamaronek. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Fusco? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next one is full-time village attorney, I won't make the motion. The next one is Full Time Village Attorney. I won't make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, here's my question. If we're not talking about particular people or particular applications, how is this executive session? Shouldn't that discussion be out in the open of whether and when to hire a full-time village attorney? I don't want to be caught up in, you know, being accused of being executive session again when we shouldn't be.
I believe that it's executive session based upon our past executive session and continuing that discussion.
But I guess, I guess Tom's seeking some clarification. Are you, you know, planning on speaking about individual people? Or hiring a village attorney?
Or a concept.
Pursue, avenues of pursuing what the board has put in motion.
I guess I don't understand that.
I don't either. Okay, is there a motion in a second?
Does that relate, Mr. Nash? Does that relate to the applications that have been discussed? That's the question.
Yeah, yes.
Then it's the same. I understand it. The discussing moving forward on the village attorney, you know, with people who have applied, et cetera, you know, how to proceed.
I think the question is with the et cetera. If we're going to talk about specific people, that can be an executive session. If we want to talk about whether to proceed, how to proceed, that's not executive session and maybe we should divide the discussion into two parts.
That was my point. And there's a motion in a second. Mr. Fussell. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
I don't think I understand it well enough to say yes, so I vote no.
That is?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
And can I ask a question about ABC Properties? Why are we going into ABC Properties if we don't have the attorney?
That was that is.
Oh, yeah. He brought that up. Probably that's what the reason why sometimes we, we need to do this earlier when we do have the right counsel. All the right, otherwise it's not going to be efficient. So, so do we strike that one or?
We voted on our right. We just don't have to have a substantive discussion.
But then I
we can talk amongst ourselves about rather counsel. I mean, you know, or we could, you know.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we'll do, but Jerry isn't, isn't that, well, we'll just, we'll, we'll ask Jerry about.
Yeah. Executive session instead of having it out here. All right, but please remember that you have to come out here at the end of the day to close the meeting.
Here is my question. So what happens to this meeting?
I put it on post. He puts it on post with
Oh, you know, I don't, okay, I don't think, I don't think I got an executive. Okay, I, okay, I, okay, I know. Sorry, I have it. Okay.
Okay. I mentioned executive session. Will you get this thing on executive session? Let me just shut this down.
Mayor, Mayor, we need, we need five minutes or 10.
All right, take five minutes, take five minutes.
Yeah, we need.
Take five minutes.
Back in the meeting.
Dan Asheson?
Yes, will you adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I have to report that in executive session, the Board of Trustees had a motion to pursue attorney's fees and costs in the matter of McCrory versus the Village of Amerenick. It was a four to one vote with trustee Nash's voting no. And that's all there was to report out of executive session. I need a motion to close this meeting and trustee to full left executive session that is not here now. I need a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Question.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.